This is Tuesday, October 15, 2024 at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A Sections 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under government/citycouncils/contact the council. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please join me for a moment of silence? In order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on October 1st, 2024, may I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second? Jonathan?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. In order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on October 1st, 2024, may I have a motion? Nate?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
And Pete, second? Thank you. All those in favor? I like to get ahead of you guys. And just to let you know, we're going to be moving under new business, the extra mile for heroes, we're going to be moving that under communications and presentations because of a time problem with the person that's involved with that. All right. I've got to do my mayor's report, and I've got two sections of this. And one is a meeting that we had held this week about our opioid problem, and the other is about the two fire stations. So the first is, we met with Gordon Smith, the Director of the Opioid Response from the Governor's Office. He was coming through Sanford yesterday on a holiday. I spoke with Representative Anne Marie Mistracchio to arrange a meeting with him and talk about the syringe service program in Sanford and the negative impact it has had all over our community and the citizens who live near the parks, downtown, and the trails, plus the impact it is having on our businesses, the police, and the fire departments. With very short notice, even though Monday was a holiday, I was able to get the following people to attend. Representative Anne Marie Mistracchio, Housing Authority Diane Small, Police Chief Eric Small, who's the better part of that couple, City Manager Steve Buck, Deputy Mayor Maura Hurley, Councilor Pete Trenchmontane, and myself, Mayor Becky Brink. We shared with Director Smith, now understand, he is the second down from the governor, so this kind of gives you direct access to the governor. We shared with him a number of our problems that we were having with the program when it went from one-to-one exchange to 100 syringes at every visit. Our concern centered around the large number of discarded contaminated syringes creating a public health hazard for all of our citizens. These syringes are scattered across our public parks, our playgrounds, our sidewalks, storm drains, and private properties. We also shared that we like programs that would address the reasons why people become addicted and the ways to prevent these addictions. Director Smith understood our concerns and was able to share these concerns with the governor, plus assist us in developing next steps. I'm going to just say, we also shared with him the 19 strategies that Diane Small had us for the last year or so, we've been meeting and we've been putting them into place to take care of the homelessness within Sanford, the unhoused population. And it was amazing when we went from over 200 down to 44 people in our community, so kudos to Diane for all that she has done with that. And he even asked for a copy of our 19 strategies because he was very impressed with all that Sanford has done. Not many communities have done what we have done. City Manager Steve Buck will be sharing with you during this meeting a resolution at the city council, from the city council, to address the syringe service program in hopes of protecting our citizens from exposure from inappropriate discarded syringes. So when we get to that with Steve, please pay attention to what he is going to read, and I'll draw attention to it because it's a step-by-step by step over the past years of stuff we have done and the lack of support we have had from the state level in this. So that is part one of my report. And part two, this is the last chance I have to speak with you about voting for the two fire stations before November 5th. I understand there is a general distrust of government officials, but your city councilors are your neighbors and friends. Several of us also have businesses in this community, plus some of us have children and grandchildren who also live here in Sanford. Plus, I want to let everybody know, we don't like paying taxes either. First, I know there's been some confusion about the local, the total cost of this project, so let's break that down. The bond for the building two new fire stations is $42.5 million. When we account for the interest over time, the total cost will be $74.9 million. I want to make it clear that this interest was included in the net taxation numbers we shared with you from the start. There are no hidden costs beyond what you have already been told. That number hasn't changed. To put it simply, this is like taking out a mortgage. When you buy a home, you borrow money and you pay interest. The same happens to us when we buy, it's like getting a mortgage on a fire department. Now, why is it important to vote yes? If the bond is approved, we can apply for millions of dollars in grants. These grants can help lower the bonding costs and the interest we need to pay. If you understand that, the lower the amount we borrow, the less interest also on that money. While we can't guarantee we will receive these grants, we cannot even apply for them until the bond is approved by the voters. The longer we wait, the more it will cost to build, plus the less chance we have for a grant to lower the cost as there will be more cities in the future applying for these grants. It is impossible to say we support the firefighter paramedics without providing an adequate, safe work environment. These new fire stations are vital for Sanford's future. They will help improve emergency response time and provide our firefighters with the space and the updated facilities they need to do their jobs well. By voting yes, we prepare for a better future while also looking for ways to save money. Please go to our website to view the videos and find answers to your many questions. I believe this will help you understand the needs for these two stations. Finally, I want to remind you that your yes vote is very important. Voting yes on the bond means voting for a safer and a better-prepared Sanford. Thank you. All right, now for, we had subcommittees, and so Maura, did you have a subcommittee? No?
Not this week because I couldn't do zoning, so Ann took care of that.
Okay.
So Ann has everything today.
All right, we'll go right down. Bob, did you have any?
No.
Okay, so Ann, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending three subcommittee meetings last Tuesday. The first was the Municipal Operations and Property Subcommittee, the mayor, deputy mayor, and I were in attendance. There were several airport items of which most are on tonight's agenda. The one that isn't on tonight's agenda is an update to our land lease template for private hangars, which is pending tonight's discussion on airport rates and fees, so that will hold to a future council meeting. We also discussed, under Parks and Recreation, a road closure that we'll see tonight, but of note, we discussed at subcommittee that if there's a standard road closure with year over year, that we should just go ahead and send that straight to the council as opposed to having that be seen at subcommittee and then also council. We also did enter into an executive session to discuss disposition of a parcel of city-owned property that we may see before the full council at a future date. I then attended a scintillating Public Safety Subcommittee at which the Council Martel, myself, and the mayor were in attendance. We heard from dispatch, in September, there were over 9,300 calls to our regional dispatch center, with 8,200 of those calls being police-related and 896 being fire and EMS, and that is region-wide, not just here in Sanford. The really exciting part or interesting part of that conversation that Megan Welch actually presented was in regards to 911 hang-up calls, and I think we discussed maybe having her at a future meeting, but long story short, if you accidentally call 911, and I did not know this prior to the meeting, stay on the line, have dispatch get your information, confirm that it is not actually a 911 issue, and that will actually save dispatch significant time in trying to reach back to you, make sure it wasn't a 911 call with an emergency related to it. So long story short, accidentally call, I've done it before, my kids have done it before, you call 911, stay on the line, and let them know you do not actually need assistance. We also had a great fire department update, it was nice to see AC Watkins at that, and we'll actually hear from the fire department this evening. Of note, there have been, year-to-date, over 3,500 calls to service, which is up 6% from last year. Those incidents are primarily still rescue and EMS incidences. And then October for folks is Fire Prevention Month, so just keep that in mind, test your smoke alarms. We also heard from Public Works, which is a new attendee at Public Safety, and it was a good conversation about upcoming crosswalk signs coming, some street painting, looking at damaged guardrails here in the community that hopefully will be fixed, and also working on removing deadly fixed objects like redundant streetlights. Finally, zoning subcommittee, Councilor Martel, Councilor Stackpole, and myself attended, and that item, of course, is on tonight's agenda.
Do we have any other reports? Nate, it's you.
I do have one. After a long hiatus, the Land Bank Authority met for our meeting on the 9th. I was in attendance along with a deputy mayor and a Councilor Trenchmontane. One of our first things was to welcome our Assistant City Manager Michelle Labrie to the Land Bank, who will be helping us lead the charge in our mission. We also are reexamining the process of how we bring dangerous building hearings to the council, and so that will become in time, but we expect that we'll be presenting, as opposed to three, we'll start off with one at a time to get the process solidified, and then perhaps more as time goes on. We've also looked into buildings that have been declared dangerous, had an action plan, that action plan failed, and talking about what steps need to be taken, including up to demolition. And lastly, we had a discussion on an ordinance to discuss blighted commercial buildings here in the city. We actually had a first reading on that back, I believe in February or March, but given the time elapsed, it's passed, we're actually going to bring that back up for a public hearing at a later date and further discussion on that ordinance, so be on the lookout for that. And that was the Land Bank.
Thank you very much. And I think that does it for the subcommittee reports, and so now let's move on to the city manager's report. You know what? I didn't do roll call.
No, you didn't.
We're going to back up. If this was a cartoon, we'd play everything in reverse.
Bob told me, but then I was like, eh, is it important enough?
It is, they need to know who you are. And the only reason I got it was because I said the word "city manager," and I realized that was the first time tonight I said that word. So, here we go. Back up to roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Present.
Councilor Stackpole?
Present.
Council Hanselman?
Present.
Councilor Martel?
Present.
Councilor Trenchmontane?
Present.
Councilor Hitchcock?
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present, and City Manager Steve Buck, and Executive Director Larissa Ricketts. Okay, let's see if I can stay on task now. All right, now, city manager.
So the elements that I bring to you in this type of a report are elements that are not currently in the works or not coming before the agenda this evening or in subcommittees, so it's more an informational update. Received word, there's a transformer cleanup by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, MDEP provided notice that two transformers located on property formerly owned by Regco, and if Ben can get this, so we can see this graphic on the screen, there we go. It's off in Heritage Drive, adjacent to the river, there's a small little J29-24A, it's a small lot, has the transformer building there, former pump house owned by Regco, which is International Woolen Mills. So when the DEP came to Sanford last June, we called them down here to inspect the encampment that was on the adjacent property, J30-47 at that point in time. DEP performed an inspection for which I still don't have a report on, they never submitted a report back to us, but they did note that there was two leaking transformers there and tried to ping the city for that. So it filed, not the city's property, so they went back, and there was a confirmed spill notification on that. DEP sampled the oil and found that the oil did not contain PCBs, so that's a very positive thing. They then went under spill number P-662-24, did the cleanup of the, drained the transformers down, cleaned up some earth around it that was oil-saturated from the transformers, and have closed that out. It's on file, so should that property be redeveloped in the future? We have record of the fact that was cleaned up and performed, so there's that information. The next is a very positive note, a notice of grant award from the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development for Housing Opportunity Program municipal grants. So Erin Moriarty, who's here this evening, applied for and has now received notice of conditional award for a Housing Opportunity Program municipal grant in the amount of $50,000. Grant award is to be utilized to pay a portion of the ongoing RKG, that's the market analysis being performed as part of our comp plan update, as well as pay for a consultant to perform a parking analysis and make recommendations for the city to consider as part of the comprehensive planning study. Parking, its importance, type, number, requirements, and locations will be critical updates within the comprehensive plan, and this grant award will aid in funding and completing the study for our comprehensive plans consideration. The fire station forum, I'll make remarks on that. The forum was held on October 2nd at the Performing Arts Center and was attended by a number of Sanford-Springvale residents, watched live on WSSR-TV to my knowledge, I think we've had 500 viewings of that since the broadcast. And the forum provided information in the critical areas of need, renovation versus new construction, the station's designs, and the why the fire, all we could notice, the fire metrics, and the fiscal impacts of financing the project. And it did note that there's been a lot of dialogue over this past weekend of social media about the cost of the financing, that was fully disclosed as part of the financial disclosure. All of the analysis as to what the impact was on a $300,000 average home included principal and interest. The bond statement includes that as well. Let's see. And so my general observation from that was I think there was strong recognition of the need and the whys around the design, why the space is, what it is, et cetera and that, but many people still grapple with the cost. But we saw many, several people there that evening that came not supporting, but left supporting after they received the information. So I just want to thank all voters for doing their research and spending the time to consider the project going forward, and I want to thank you for exercising your right to vote, but I do encourage you to study the project out when you, so you can make that vote in an informed manner. Homelessness, so there's not a homelessness report here tonight because the committee has been focused on getting the forum together. So on November 14th, there's actually now a combined forum that's going to be proposed for our state legislators. They are working on today and finalizing the list of not only current legislators, but also people that are running for those seats as well, so they can be provided notice of this, because this is the week after the elections. So the forum is now a twofold piece, so we'll be talking to our incumbent and/or newly-elected legislators, we'll know at that point in time who they all are. We'll be talking to them about homelessness here in York County, we're going to start with a statewide unhoused priority list, and then relate how that impacts us here in the local level in York County, and have various agencies and/or service providers speak on those elements, so that as both incumbent legislators or incoming legislators, you be armed with, here's what's going on at the state level for awareness, here's how it impacts us here at the local level in York County, and leave more with the high-end elements of that, rather than last year was a lot of data and information and such. The goal is that as that comes up in the legislative session and the dialogues, various pieces of legislation, you'll know the topic, you'll, as a York County legislator, you'll better understand how it impacts us here locally, and our aspiration is that you know where the critical areas are for us here in York County and that you assign those resources appropriately so we can address homelessness here in York County. Also attached for that, the second portion of that, the York County Superintendent's Association, will be, will hand, from homelessness, will hand over the legislators to the superintendents, and they're going to be talking about the central programs and services, how that impacts us here, some amendments that need to be made to that, although that's going to be difficult conversation at the state level because it costs the state more money. So, but they will be talking about that, predominantly in the area of economically disadvantaged students, the cost of social services that is not paid for under EPS but yet we're mandated. We have to pick students up starting this coming year at three, the age of three. So there's a lot of incurred additional costs there that needs to be talked about. The EPS funding formula's been out there since the Baldacci administration and has had very little amendments to it since the time it was first put in place. We're suggesting that now's the time to look at that, and amendments need to be made, be they easy or difficult. So that's, will be taking place on November 14th at the Performing Arts Center. The next piece in the report is-
Before you move on, let me get this straight about the schools. The schools are now going to be responsible for especially special needs people from age three all the way through to 22. So, think about what that does to a school budget. So, yeah, it's going to be a big hit.
It's only, the 18 to 22 piece, because I was in on this, I was at that meeting, is only for those who do not receive a diploma, those who get certificates, you know, whatever might be happening in their lives or their individual disabilities, they just, they're not going to graduate, but they're requiring the school department to manage the needs until 22.
Correct.
I just wanted to make everybody clear on that.
They're expanding and changing the service deliveries that our school systems are doing.
And-
End of story, right? End of story.
And we all got the impression it's because other services that have been in place for the early learning, the early years and the later years are themselves failing, and they're thinking, well, the school department could probably handle it because school departments tend to figure it out.
Yes. All right. Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, here's another topic that we love to talk about. Haybrook Bridge. So this has been an ongoing project. So this is the bridge over Haybrook that joined Alfred and Sanford together. It's a joint-owned minor span, they call it a bridge, but technically by DOT standards because it's under 20 feet, it's a minor span. It's a joint-owned minor span between the two communities. Alfred made a concerted decision not to participate in the renovation and/or replacement of that bridge, and in fact, they actually, last year, they closed the stone road on the opposite side, on the Alfred side of that, they discontinued it, and they allocated $0 towards the repair and maintenance of Haybrook Bridge. So that being said, our city filed suit against the town of Alfred, for which we now have received a stipulated judgment. We were paid damages pursuant to those actions, because when they closed the road, they had to account for impacts to the abutter. Sanford isn't a abutter, so they paid us for those impacts. And then the town of Alfred agreed that they would remove the bridge at shared expense, but they would take on the permitting and the removal. Pictorially, here, you can see on the left-hand side, there's Jersey barriers up there, we have signage out at the end of the road notifying people that it's no longer a throughway. You can see the barriers on the Alfred side as well, and then they have barriers on the Alfred side up towards the housing project up there that's discontinued that road that leads down to the bridge. And then the picture on the right is, the bridge is now removed, and they just left the causeway in place, so that was Alfred's responsibility, they perfected that action. We have a company that's coming in to put guardrails up in this area, adjoining the former bridge and closing off the ends. The same contractor will do that work on both sides of the bridge to finish that off. So that kind of closes that era. Paving this fall, so just a notification, Jordan, our communications person pushed this out, but there's further work that's being done. Reclamation on Bowden Bates and Harvard Streets on October 17th, and Goodwin Bridges Road on October 18th. So reclamation is where they grind down the pavement, grind it back up, put it back down. They'll do final grading on those roads, Bowden Bates, Harvard Streets on October 23rd and 24th, and Goodwin Bridge Road on October 25th. They'll be doing base pavement on Bowden Bates and Harvard Streets on October 24th and 25th, and Goodwin Bridges Road on October 28th. And then the, will do final paving surface on Emery Street, three-quarter inch overlay on October 30th, Goodwin's Bridge Road on October 29th, and then Bowden Bates and Harvard on October 31st and November 1st, and all of these are tentative upon both rain and temperature. So there's temperature windows that we have hit doing this late-season paving, as far as surface temperatures of 55 and above, rising and not falling, and we can't have the moisture content to pave as well, so those dates are, have been set, but again, they are weather-dependent.
I'm excited about all of them, they're all in particularly bad condition, in very poor condition.
These are being done from funds that were left over in Public Works last year that the council allowed us to reassign to put towards these because we had a significantly light winter, so very low use of salt, magnesium chloride, overtime was down, plumbing services were down, so those resources were brought forward to do this additional work this year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes?
Can I just speak for a second?
Yes, you can.
It's related to these previous reports. I just want to go back to the noise that's being made about the fire department, fire station bond, and it is exactly as the mayor's presented it here. The difference is the interest, and that's what people are suddenly making the noise about. And that information has been out there at least until, at least since October 2nd, it was probably out there even before then. But people need to understand what they're voting for, because this goes to the matter here. What you're voting for, the $42.5 million, is the upper limit that you're going to, by your affirmative vote, allow the city to borrow or bond to build the two fire stations. That's the upper limit, that's the most that we're going to be able to borrow to do these fire stations. And of course, just like your mortgage, as the mayor said, when you borrow money to pay for your house, you have interest that goes along with that for a number of years. I've heard it said that you pay for your house three times over with the interest that you actually pay for your house, so interest is not a small matter. But what you're approving is just the upper limit that the city can borrow. Okay, I'll say that one more time, just the upper limit that the city can borrow. If it's approved, then as was said, we can apply for bonds, the upper limit might not be 42.5, it might be significantly less than that, and as was already said, the interest then would be significantly less. So you're not approving 72, whatever it was, 72, 75, something like that, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, you're approving the upper limit, which may in fact be less than the 42.5, but again, we can't apply for those grants until they're approved. Okay? So everything has to line up, you know, like Domino's, they will all move ahead, but let's not be confused about what you're voting on. You're voting on allowing the city to borrow a certain amount of money, 42.5 million, that's all. Okay? And again, that amount might be less. So I think there's been a lot of confusion around that, and people are using that to mislead others into saying, you know, the real cost is 70, $75 million, not 42, and we need to get that squared away.
Thank you, Bob. Jonathan? Jonathan?
I was just hoping Steve could clarify that. I think that it's forty-two or roughly that for principal, but then there is also the interest. So the bond will be around seventy-something, seventy-two by the time it's fully paid off. So just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah, so I think everybody does understand that. So the forty-two point five is the principal amount that's, we're requesting authorization to borrow for the constructed cost, right? Then there's thirty point nine million dollars worth of interest on a thirty-year bond because we can't afford a twenty-year bond payment, so we extended it out for the full thirty years. The projections are pursuant to the main municipal bond bank, which varies from three point five-eight to five point two percent over that period of time. Both principal and interest were projected into the calculation of the fiscal impact for a three hundred thousand dollar home. That's all part of the presentation that's in there. We find that individuals are using that information to speak poorly about the project. We're speaking poorly about the project before, they're just using this as another iteration of how to speak it. So, so I think to put it into perspective, so we continuously use the three hundred thousand dollar home because that's the median home here in Sanford now, so we look at where, where that impact is. So going on Realtor.com today, a three hundred thousand dollar home purchased here in Sanford, you pay twenty percent down, so you can put sixty thousand dollars down on that. Bear in mind, the city's not putting a down payment on, we're borrowing the full amount. So you put twenty percent down, so now you're going to borrow two hundred and forty thousand dollars with today's interest rate and on a thirty-year mortgage, you're going to pay five hundred and forty-eight thousand, so you're going to pay three hundred and eight thousand dollars worth of interest on that two hundred and forty thousand dollars of principal borrowed. But you bought a three hundred thousand dollar house. The fire station's a forty-two point five, thirty-year investment in that is an additional thirty-one million dollars of interest. So no smoke and mirrors, the numbers were presented accordingly and accurately because those were based upon the same, our bond bank, which is our law firm, Bernstein Shore, we have bond counsel in there that were mandated to use the bond counsel that produced the bond results, who used the same calculator from the main municipal bond bank that we, and then I took bat and translated that into the fiscal impact for the tax statements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on. We're under communications and presentations and we're moving twenty-four, three seventy-two dash zero one up to the front of the line. And it's a proclamation recognizing extra mile heroes who are creating positive change in the community through extraordinary efforts in volunteerism and service. And some people who are tuning in and watching this think that this award is for Ann Hanselman. So at this time, I am going to turn this meeting over to Ann and she will straighten us all out on what this is really about, so, and surprise her family.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have in front of me a proclamation honoring Joshua Pongan and Brendan Spinelli as extra mile heroes on today, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Now, one second, they are the two guys right on the end, on your right-hand side for those people, for those handsome gentlemen-
Yeah.
-who are smiling and looking in shock like, she tricked us.
Very confused gentlemen.
And, and we do have lots of family here as well. But, so the proclamation reads, whereas the Sanford, the Sanford City Council has declared November one, twenty twenty-four to be extra mile day, when individuals collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism and service, and whereas the Sanford City Council may also name extra mile heroes whose inspiring and selfless acts are featured on the Extra Mile America website, and whereas both Joshua Pongan and Brendan Spinelli have both earned PhDs in Spanish linguistics from Temple University, and whereas Brendan is currently an assistant professor for the Spanish Department at Villanova University, and Joshua having been an assistant professor, professor for the Spanish and Portuguese Department at Temple University and is now a portfolio manager for world languages at McGraw-Hill, and whereas they use their language skills for the greater good as educators and acad, as educators and academia and as volunteers, such as with doctors of the Americas for whom they provide translation services in El Salvador annually, and whereas they genuinely care about others and understand the challenges that exist when there are language and communication barriers and wish to help reduce those challenges, and whereas Joshua and Brendan are connected to Sanford as they are family of Councilor Hanselman and frequently visit the area and know the community. And whereas when a large number of new Mainers first arrived in Sanford on May fifth, twenty twenty-three, an immediate challenge to city officials assisting the new Mainers was the ability to communicate. And whereas when the city reached out for translation assistance via phone, Joshua and Brendan readily responded and greatly assisted in successful communication with the new Mainers on that first day. And whereas since that first call, they have repeatedly been of assistance to the Sanford Police Department as well as the General Assistance Office whenever asked. And whereas their willingness and to selflessly, selflessly share their knowledge and time to help make a difference in the lives of many is a perfect example of the ideal of going the extra mile. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford and Springville, does hereby extend our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Joshua Pongan and Brendan Spinelli in recognition and appreciation of their outstanding efforts to help make our community a welcoming place for all by naming them our twenty twenty-four Sanford Extra Mile Day Heroes.
Blown away, thank you all so, so much.
Well, thank you guys for all that you have done for our community, we really appreciate it, especially in our time of need where I don't think many of us can speak more than English and we really needed you and you were there for us so, and continually be there. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, it's always just a phone call or a Zoom away.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this because I believe that's why it was on the agenda.
Yes.
We moved it up so, because it was kind of both, but we have, we do have to approve that, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation.
And the second? Ann?
Oh, I'll, I'll second that.
All right, and all those who approve? Thank you very much and thank you guys for all you've done.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, can I just mention that Chief Small was the one that brought this idea forward, so thank you, Chief, for bringing this forward and just want to let them know that he was the one that initiated the award.
And thank you very much for doing that. It's good when we recognize our citizens and, and acknowledge all that they do, so thank you, thank you. All right. Now, continuing on, we now, our next one is Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, presentation by Durigo Safety. And Eric Small is going to start us off.
Good evening, Eric Small, Police Chief. Very nice to see Josh and Brendan for the first time. I've never seen their face, but I've talked to them on the phone many of times. They've saved the day numerous times and really thankful, appreciate you guys. Tonight I'm here to present on the main law enforcement accreditation program and I'm going to introduce you, James Willis. Jim is the main law enforcement accreditation program manager. Jim began his, his thirty-seven-year law enforcement career at the Hancock County Sheriff's Office where he worked for seventeen years, reaching the rank of lieutenant. Jim left law enforcement for a short, short time and worked for the Hancock County District Attorney's Office as a witness victim advocate. He assisted victims of crimes, helped them navigate criminal justice system. He also assisted prosecuting attorneys preparing cases, coordinating, coordinating witnesses' appearances for court. In two thousand and three, Jim felt a calling to get back into public service and became the chief of police at the town of Mountain Desert and later served simultaneously as the Bar Harbor Chief of Police for ten years. While working as a shared chief of police, Jim built and maintained partnerships in his community, living by the motto that no one accomplishes anything alone. Jim is also past president of the Maine Association of Chiefs of Police. In the short time I've gotten to know Jim, I've learned the work he's most proud of was when he worked with a group of police chiefs to develop the MLEAP program. After the program was stood up, Jim chaired the MLEAP Committee for the Maine Chiefs of Police Association from its inception until his retirement last year. Currently, Jim works for Durigo Safety where he's the law enforcement liaison for the Maine Bureau of Highway Safety and serves as the program manager for the Maine Chiefs of Police Association's main law enforcement accreditation program. On behalf of the Sanford Police Department, retired Chief Anderson and retired Deputy Chief Tim Strout, I'd like to introduce you, James Willis. Jim?
Thank you. Thank you very much. At least, I guess that proves I'm old, right? Thank you. I, I'm here to talk to you about our, our program. Tonight is about your police department. That's who gets the credit here because that's just done all the work. Forgive my voice, I'm about a week into a cold and I, I think I'm better, but if I don't make it, I've got some help back there with Elliot. So the, the Maine Chiefs created the MLEAP program as a proactive way for departments to come up to what a group of working police chiefs believe to be the, the best, minimum best practices in law enforcement. There's a few other ways to do that, there's a federal program called Kalia, it's incredibly expensive and generally takes a full-time employee or two to accomplish and not many agencies in Maine could accomplish that. So the Maine Chiefs were in a position where the leadership was recognizing, but when we were called upon, it was usually when there was a problem in a community that, that they were looking for some help with and those things generally have a negative tone and we wanted to find a way to give chiefs some tools to prevent those from happening. So we created our own accreditation program, we worked with the Maine Municipal Association, their attorneys and others, and we developed a hundred and sixty-five standards that are outlined in several different chapters of operating a law enforcement agency. I heard you talk about dispatch tonight, that's one of them. We take a look at generators, we take a look at internal affairs, it is a tremendous amount of work. It is a voluntary undertaking. Full disclosure, my agency was never accredited. They are working on it and I expect to be going back to a council meeting sometime soon to give them their award. I, I'm not sure how long your agency worked on it, but I can assure you it was years. It, it really is going through every policy and procedure you have and making sure it aligns with the accreditation program. Do you have, and more importantly, are you doing the things to, to monitor systems to prevent problems? You know, it's, it's one thing to have a use of force policy, but it's yet another to ask your chief to do an examination of all of your use of force incidents last year and what lessons are learned there and what kind of training can you do to improve it? That, that's just one thing you have to do, there, there's lots of areas there. We, we, if you want to learn more about the program, if you go to the Maine Chiefs of Police Association's website, there is a section on there called MLEAP, there's a program manual and a standards manual that has pages of, and pages that explain about this program. The governing body for the program is a group of, it's a subcommittee of the Maine Chiefs Association. There are, I believe, I think seven police chiefs, five or seven, a sheriff, the colonel of Maine State Police, the director of the Criminal Justice Academy. And we tried to make sure that we had a, you know, a full spectrum, so we were looking at all the areas. So Sanford came into the program a couple of years ago and while I was still a police chief and they were accepted in and they've worked very, very hard to, to get here. It takes the entire agency, this is not just the chief's office. We do most of our assessing remotely, we're looking at documents, we're calling, going, where's this, where's that, we can't find this, you need to change this one. Those calls go on for about six months. And finally, we have an assessment team. The assessment team for here was led by Chief Elliot Moya, who was back here from Elliot PD. He's the chairman of the MLEAP Committee, he took it over after I retired and he still does a lot of the assessments. So that, it was about six weeks, I think, when I looked at how much time went into his team, I, I think there were two full-time assessors with me helping them. And then finally, we were here in August, onsite, we have to do an inspection, we literally have to have the chief unlock drawers, show us reports, we want to ride along with the patrolmen, we talk to them about their views of how things are going and we, we actually go around town and, and just sort of make sure everything is just right. There are no exceptions with MLEAP. You meet everything or you don't. And if you don't, you're asked to start over again. So just please be very, very proud of your police department. Your former chief is here, he started this effort, I met with him back in August. Your new chief was in the office with us and has been heavily involved with this and they, they've really led to something that's going to result in probably some positive agency change for you. Things will look a little bit different to the people working there and it's harder. And again, it's voluntary. If everybody isn't all on board, it doesn't work. So, and I assure you, everybody is on board here, the men and women at the Sanford Police Department want to give you the best service they can. And they found a way to do this without spending too much money. The Maine Municipal piece I told you about, they believe strongly in the program enough that they're offering every town a fifteen percent discount on your law enforcement liability insurance, and I'll be sending that email tomorrow, so you should get a credit on your bill. And this status is good for three years. There are things you have to do in between and we'll be in touch about that. I think those systems are actually out in place. So at the end of three years, they'll come back in and we have to do it all over again. They're currently, I believe you're the thirty-seventh agency in Maine, that is probably somewhere around a quarter of the agencies of Maine that have chosen to do this. You're asked, one of the bigger ones, because it gets a little more challenging as you get bigger, but if any questions or anything about the program?
Counselors, any questions? No?
Sounds like a lot of work.
It is a lot of work and, and it's nothing anyone makes them do. So please help me be proud of your agency and we're going to present them with this plaque.
Thank you.
It's up on the wall and we're going to give them, there's some stickers in here they can put on their cars if they choose. Chief, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Eric, let me get this straight, Craig kind of got this ball rolling and now for the next three years, you have to do something with it.
Craig who? Honestly, a majority of the credit belongs to Tim Strout. Tim was put in the professional development coordinator position about two and a half years ago and he really drove the bus, but a lot, the rest of the credit belongs to the officers, they, they really gave buy-in and everybody had a part in every policy. So, you know, everybody worked on it. So everybody, you know, things Jim mentioned may seem different, but really, they don't seem different because they created all the policies and were working within them. So yes, thank you to Chief Anderson, thank you to Tim Strout and everybody that's worked on it, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. So far, a very positive evening, I like this. And now we're going to do a presentation from the Sanford Fire Department on the fire gear decontamination. And this was done at one of our subcommittees and I was very impressed with this, so if you would just introduce yourself and your role so that people would understand who you are.
Yes.
Is the mic on?
Can you hear me okay?
Brian, is it open on the desktop?
Do I have to do it here to show it to everybody or? I'm new at this.
Fear, fear, fear.
I like the idea-
When I go down for the count, you save me out there, okay?
I, I really like the idea of the paper copy and you think they can. It's so cute.
It's how I live my life, I print everything. And then you can just use the arrow keys here. Perfect. There you go. Perfect. Okay. Sorry for the delay. Brian Watkins, Assistant Chief, Sanford Fire. As, as the mayor said, we talked about this in Public Safety Subcommittee and I was asked to come back and give the presentation to the full council. So here I am, we're going to, we're going to talk about decontamination and how we achieve decontamination currently in our, in our facilities and getting our equipment nice and clean. So why do we need to decon? We need to remove hazardous exposures, which are the byproducts of combustion, which essentially is smoke, PFAS or forever chemicals, which, which that is the, the, the kind of the newer hazard that we have to deal with and we'll get into that a little bit more in-depth in a little bit, and bloodborne pathogens. Not removing these hazards can increase the likelihood of cancer and other illnesses. So illnesses from bloodborne pathogens and cancer from the byproducts of smoke. Doing research today in preparation for tonight, just to get my facts straight, cancer is now the leading cause of firefighter deaths, that has surpassed heart and it's, it's, it's real and it's- That has surpassed heart, and it's, it's, it's real, and it's kind of, at this point, it's not, if you get it, it's when and what type, and hopefully you can get it fast enough. The picture here is a picture of a set of turnout gear after a fire. You can see the front of it is covered in soot. That was my gear after a garage fire last winter. So, you can see the contaminants that we, that we deal with when it comes, in relation to, to a building fire. We could have put pictures of contaminated items from blood-borne pathogens, but nobody wants to see that. The byproducts of combustion, again, smoke. The four most common fire-ground carcinogens are smoke and soot, diesel engine exhaust, hydrocarbons from burning gasoline, wood, garbage, benzene and formaldehyde from burning walls, insulation and furniture. Everything that is made up today is not made up of any natural materials anymore. It is made up of 100% synthetic materials that increase heat release rates and increase the amount of smoke. If anybody, if anybody watches a building fire on YouTube or has unfortunately been witness to one, the amounts of black smoke are insane, and that is carrying all of that bad stuff, where you used to have slower burn rates 30, 40 years ago, now this stuff just lights off like that. Increases heat release rates and releases more toxins. They, and again, just like the graphic says, they release a tremendous amount of carcinogens. I wasn't going to bring the complete list and read them all to you because you'd all fall asleep, but it's tremendous, the list that, that is, of carcinogens that is released when these materials burn. So, PFAS or forever chemicals. Common things that they're found in is Class B foam. We do not use Class B foam. We use a different type of foam within this city. Chief Benati changed that years ago, and all of our Class B that you still hear of problems with, that is, that is gone. Our turnout gear. The protective clothing that we wear releases forever chemicals and increases our likelihood of cancer in our armpits, around our neck, our ears, things like that. And we carry this equipment in our fire apparatus, our chiefs' vehicles, which you guys learned about those a month or two ago. All that stuff is right in the back, and that is all, those, those chemicals are released as, as we're driving down the road. So, there's really no better way to store this stuff in our apparatus. We don't have the ability in the apparatus that we purchased to have separate exterior compartments for our equipment. Fire station dust. You can see there's a study done in 2021 that our dust in our fire station, the particulates in there, contain those forever chemicals, and were found in all areas of fire stations. And building fires, obviously, a lot of chemicals are released there. One of the, one of the tests that was done, that 30 feet from the burning building, even though there is no smoke, there is the same amount of chemicals and carcinogens in the air as there would be at the building with the smoke. So, even though we are not, we are not being inundated by smoke in certain areas of the fire ground, those chemicals are still in the air, and we're being exposed to them. Bloodborne, you can use your imagination. We deal with all sorts of different type of bodily fluids, and we, through years of practice, and through especially during the HIV epidemic year in the 80s, we got very good at protecting ourselves from bloodborne pathogens. Some of the, the fire-ground stuff is newer in the, in the grand scheme of things, but we, we do very well to protect ourselves. We took extra precautions during COVID, which was head-to-toe equipment to keep us, to keep us safe, and when we're exposed to those with HIV, Hep B, things like that, there are ways to decontaminate and clean yourself up from that. So, how do we decon? So, this is a picture of the process for our turnout gear. Decontamination starts at the fire scene and not at the fire station. So, we have smaller hoses that look like garden hoses that are attached. We have special connections to the pumpers, and we do a gross decontamination during the better climate. During February, you don't want to spray yourself down and scrub yourself down with water, because then you're just going to turn into an ice cube, and good luck getting that stuff off. So, it starts at the scene where everybody is hosed down, the stuff is removed. Because of the forever chemicals being in our turnout gear, we try to limit the amount of time that we have it on, especially, you know, the chiefs. When we're at command, we sometimes, unless it's absolutely necessary, we will limit the amount of protective gear that we have on, so that we're not exposing our armpits and our neck to those forever chemicals. So, once that's done, every piece of apparatus has contractor bags, and we take our equipment, and we put it in that contractor bag, and nothing rides back in the cab. If it's a fire where we have a lot of the shift as well as recall people, we will, we will get a pickup truck, and we will throw it all in the back and keep it out of the fire apparatus. Even coming back into fire apparatus, our uniform underneath is still dirty, for lack of a better term. But, that, that stuff starts back at the station. So, when we get back to the station, none of the vehicles come back in. In the middle of winter, the trucks stay outside running, and those bays are used to stack up our SCBA bottles, our air packs, our axes. Every little thing that was used at that fire is put on that floor, and it is washed and scrubbed, and then rinsed, and then set off to dry. Once that's done, we clean the floor, we bring the apparatus back in, and then the apparatus cleaning begins, and, which is what we're depicting here with, the picture on the right is how we would bring it back, and then we have to put protective equipment back on to separate everything to send it to the laundry. Once it's separated, it's all collected back in a trash bag, labeled what's in there, and within a day or two, the next, the next shift, or whomever, if it's on a weekend, it may have to wait a couple of days in the bays before it goes to, to the laundry. It is done at Laundry Right. Last year, we spent just under $2,500 on laundering our equipment from building fires. A lot of the, so if we get our clothes with bloodborne stuff, we either bring that there or we just bring it to the hospital. Hospital is better, better capable of cleaning that stuff. And, you know, we don't, we don't like to expose, expose the employees at Laundry Right to the carcinogens. We sure don't want them to have to worry about, and name your bodily fluids. So, that's where, that's where we bring it. And then it comes back to the picture on the left in a nice, clear bag and cleaned. It is still all separated. We still wear gloves to put it back together because of those forever chemicals. And in the meantime, as, as they, in the meantime, when that initial set of gear goes to the laundry, every firefighter has a second set of gear that they can use. If you have two shifts, and you're two shifts in a row that you have a fire and your gear is sent to the cleaners, then we have, we have spare gear that they can fit into until their stuff gets back. So, they have, they have an extractor there, but they don't have a dryer to dry this stuff out. So, she has to leave it hanging and air-dry until it gets to the point that, that we can retrieve it, and then we put it all back together after that. So, our decon space right now, the, the two pictures on the left is our biohazard decon, and you can see it's, it's colored, it's identified, keep away, don't wash your hands here, nothing. That is strictly for biohazard only. We have to pull the ambulance out to be able to clean the equipment that we have, because that space on the leftmost picture is very narrow, and I have a hard time getting inside there. The, the yellow trash bin with the red cover, that is for, that is for biohazard trash that has to be thrown out. So, the second picture in, you can see the split in the dividing wall. That left-hand sink is for our SCBA mask, those buckets up there, there's a special solution that we use to clean those masks. So, that's, that one area, that sink, is, is for firefighting cleaning. But, like I said, the ambulance gets pulled out. And this is versus what we need, and this is, this is a diagram from the plans for the new fire stations, and you can see that that, what, what we call the hut zone is all sealed off. It is one, it is one trip through, where you go and you decon, and then you have your laundry, shower, and then move out to the clean side. And all that turnout gear with those forever chemicals are all over there as well. Once, once the equipment is, is cleaned up outside, it doesn't necessarily have to be until everything is complete at full strength. We have eight firefighters on duty at Central, and the Springvale crew has to come down and do, do their cleaning as well. So, that's 13 people that we have to rotate through. So, we will break folks up, especially the ambulances first. Part of the requirement is they also have to get rid of their uniform, shower, and put a new uniform on. So, these are the pictures of our, of our minimal cleaning spaces. On the left is the showers at Central where we only have two of them. So, that's why I say we work those rotations in. Ambulances first because they're, they're the busiest, and we don't want them having to go to somebody's house smelling like soot and, and all that. So, so they will go in, and in the, in the immediate forefront of that picture on the left is the washer and dryer. So, they'll start piling up their uniforms in the washing machine. They won't do one at a time, they'll try to get as many in there as they can. And prior to that, they go to their locker room. So, they're walking through the hall into the locker room, get a new uniform, go into, go into the, the showers, and, and get cleaned up, get their uniforms in the washer, put their new uniform on, and then out they go to help finish up what, what may be. The picture on the right under Central, we're focusing on that little lock above the handle. That lock is there for our female firefighters. We, we, we don't do co-ed showers. When, when the females have to go in and take a shower, they lock that door, that bathroom is out of service until such time as, as they are done. On the right is Springvale's. That, that shower that they have at Springvale is not much bigger than a, than a recreational vehicle shower, so they got to kind of squeeze into that to, to get their showers done. That is not the original shower in that 100-year-old building. I think, I heard stories that there was just a tub up there at one point, because 100 years old, there, there weren't any showers back then. So, I don't know what, what they did with the tub, but it's not there anymore. So, would you walk through your whole house covered in mud? So, the, the meaning of this is, the current station layout required just that. They go from cleaning that equipment, there's no separation between hot, warm and cold. It's still dirty, they go in through. Some folks will take their shoes off when they first walk in the door by the captain's office, but they have to go through, down the hallways, into the, into the bedrooms and their locker space to get, to get their clean, to get their clean uniforms, and then head into the bathroom. So, once everybody is showered, like with the cleaning of the equipment in the bays, the inside living space has to be cleaned after that. So, there's no space to remove any of that, like that, like that diagram that we looked at earlier. There's, there's not that easy transition. It's, it's contaminating everything. Even though we have a sign on all our doors that you might have seen, no turnout gear beyond this point, yeah, that's, they're still dirty when they go inside there. So, so right now, again, there's that diagram on the left, and, and I, I didn't make this PowerPoint, Assistant Chief Smith did, and his, there's just his little waiver on the bottom that he's not an artist. So, so that's that original diagram, and then this is, this is our diagram on the right of how things go at Central right now. And you can see that hallway going in, the dorm rooms and the lockers are on those three bedrooms on the right, and then they go, then they go into the shower room. So, there, again, there's no separation of that hot, warm and cold like you, like you see here, where everything is just kind of an easy transition from, from dirty to clean, including the apparatus with that section of headquarters where that is the dirty zone. So, and I believe that is it. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I've got a few.
Okay.
You made a comment about, at a certain distance away, even 30 feet away, you are still getting contaminants on you.
Yes.
So, for those people who like to walk by and look at the fire, probably not a good idea.
Right.
Because you're going home with contaminants all over you. And so, you can imagine, you guys are right in it, so you're getting an awful lot more contaminants.
Yeah.
But, I'd like to point out two things. You said cancer is now becoming even more so than heart attacks. Let's talk about the heart attacks, because it's pretty high.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to find out more, because some people were complaining about why do you have exercise gyms within the, the new fire facilities, fire stations we're going to be building? And so, I went and I met with Dr. William Frank, who probably treated 90% of the people sitting here, and he was also probably delivered a lot of, well, he delivered my kids. And he also was a city doctor for quite some time, so I met with him, and I said, "Explain to me about the heart and firefighters." And he said that there are a couple of things. First of all, they need to exercise on a regular basis. So, belonging to a gym, distance from the fire station was, is not a good idea, because then you would have travel time and you need to be on duty. So, he said, "Having it in the facility and have it being certain types of exercise is very important for the heart." And he said, "Usually firefighters, when they have a heart attack, it's after the incident. You get called out, your adrenaline is zooming, super high, and you run into a building, you're saving a person, you're carrying out somebody twice your size, which is a good reason to exercise also. And then you come back to the fire station, everything slows down, you have a heart attack." And that's why it's so important to have those physical fitness places within your facilities, so you can stay healthy. Very, very important. And so, I just wanted to make sure, because I heard some citizens say, "Why do we have to have exercise rooms within fire stations?" And listening to Dr. Frank, he said, "You would be foolish not to."
Yeah.
He said, "You have to protect your firefighters."
And, and to add a little bit to that?
Yes.
They extended our line of duty death benefits to 24 to 48 hours beyond certain types of, certain types of calls. So, if I go home and I, and they found me, they find me pass away, they will look at the incidents that I had responded to in 24 to 48 hours. So, because of that heart component, you know, they, they, there's too many, too many line-of-duty death reports out there of them.
Yes.
Dropping at a fire scene. Number one thing, "Oh, I'm not feeling well, I'm not feeling well." When somebody says at a fire, at a fire, it scares the bejesus out of me. And then, they're finding that 24 to 48 hours after these extreme incidents, doesn't have to be a fire, it could be any, any sort of thing. Any sort of incident, medical incident, anything, that, 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 that release, that adrenaline, that's, that's why they cover us for 24 to 48 hours after.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Pete?
Mine was more personal. Last weekend, you came to Sam Allen Road, there was a fire. Speaking of the soot, the amount of smoke that came off, a total loss of a camper that was on fire. It was pretty alarming to me as a city councillor, because we worked on hooking up SUVs, not SUVs, but campers for snowbirds on, on properties with hookups and being responsible. And after a while, I got quiet when it was all put out, and I asked, "Did I make a mistake?" Because we wanted the city to have that benefit of having camper hookups. I think it's a great benefit. And I'm watching this camper burn and infer all that would burn down a house. And I'm like, "Did I make a mistake?" Because I'll fix it. I will. Professionally took me aside, says, "No, the, the cars burn a lot hotter, and they're a lot closer to houses, you did just fine." So, something so quick like that, I felt like I made a huge mistake for the city when I was watching that fire. And during that time, the first call to someone showing up was nine minutes, which was pretty good, because you guys were in town on, all set up, and you guys are doing drills with several other towns. So, that was the best example for everybody on Sam Allen that was out there saying, "Oh my God, who's hurt? What can we do?" There was a pretty good crowd. And they're all saying, "Where are they? Where are they?" And I'm like, "Okay, who's the first person that called? And when they show up, I want to know the exact minute." And it was nine minutes. And I said, "You understand that we do need two new fire stations? And the, and the main fire station is going to be centrally located to the middle of the town, which is the, which is the new high school." So, now, I had to explain to everybody that was on Sam Allen Road that was completely freaked out watching this go up in flames, we didn't know if somebody was in there at the time, to understanding that maybe four minutes there, I don't know if it could have saved that trail. I'm not saying that, but if it was by a house, you, you- But if it was by a house, you had that scene covered. And so these two fire stations are real and we do need them in my opinion. And we're working on this for two years with the Fire Station Committee, Feasibility Committee. And last weekend just brought it all together that we do need these fire stations and it was the response time. So Chi Suzy, nice pick for an assistant. I'm impressed. You made a councillor very much at ease. Whereas rattled, I'm human. I thought I made a huge mistake. So thank you very much. And I just wanted the city to understand the response times. What happens after your camper by your house is four minutes? You want four minutes for them to be there or you want nine to ten and now your house is caught on fire? So I just wanted you guys to experience what I experienced. Vote from your heart. You don't have to vote because I recommend it, which I do. I just wanted that piece to go without not saying to you, thank you.
And just in reference to that too, even though that was not what we call an interior fire attack, we still had sets of gear that went to the laundry because of that smoke exposure. You standing there, you probably saw there what seemed to be periods of darkness. That's that black smoke from that synthetic material. And luckily, like you and I had talked, that owner made the right decision to just get out of there because that's how fast those things take off.
Hundreds of feet, man, it's black.
You sent me pictures. It was...
We thought it was more than, we thought it was a camper next to a building that they weren't telling us about. But the dispatcher said, no, there are no exposures. It's in a field. I'm like, hmm, well, that's impressive.
Yeah.
Yep. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Ann?
Well, first, A.C. Watkins, thank you for coming tonight. It was a great presentation. I'm glad the mayor had the idea. The two things, one, I heard that my nineteen-ten house might be a good thing after all and might be more fire resistant than other newer buildings.
Safer for us to operate.
Or safer for you to operate, although there's asbestos. But anyway.
I'll pull that out then.
I think the important takeaway for me in understanding the decontamination piece is that when we talk about these buildings and the need, you people keep saying, well, why can't we, I'll use Value Engineer, but they're saying like, why can't we cut the cost in half? You know, why can't we have less and make it work? And the reason we can't with all of this is that we need certain things in place and we need certain spaces and those hot and cold zones that we don't currently have. And those aren't optional. Those are required, they're necessary for the safety of our staff. And so I think it's really helpful to understand that the building, when you look at the building design layout, that's not just because we want this Taj Mahal of a fire station. That's not it at all. It's really about safety and having those zones. So this was really helpful. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Brian, thank you very much. I know you already did it once at the subcommittee. I'm really glad you're willing to come and do it here.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how to take that down, by the way.
He loves computers, I can tell. All right, there's no public participation signed up because everybody's waiting to do stuff on the agenda. And so we're going to go into public hearings. And let me explain, public hearings compared to under new and old business. Public hearings, we have two things under public hearings. You will find, one will be under new business and one will be under old business. The old business is usually a second read and the new business is usually a first read. What happens with the first read is we don't vote on it. It's just the first read through so we can hear from the public and hear from the councillors and what they think. The second read, we still hear from the public and the councillors, but we vote on it. So now that I explained that, we'll move on to the public hearing part. And what I do is I typically, now this is a hearing, so I typically open a hearing and close a hearing. So I'm going to start with the very first one and I think we probably have a presenter for this. I'm going to open the hearing to receive comments on change to the city ordinance, Chapter Seventy, airport article five, no, is that four when it's before it?
Five.
Five.
Four.
Four, okay. Rates and fees. Go ahead, Allison.
So the public hearing's open then?
It's open, yep.
Very good. All right. I'm Allison Avia. I'm your airport manager of the Sanford-Secos Regional Airport. The ordinance for the city has a chapter just for the airport, that's Chapter Seventy. Part of the business plan for the airport that we started in 2016 was to go through the three articles that are in existence already. We've done those. I was here a few months ago and we did the final one. So this one is a whole brand new one that we're adding. And I apologize ahead of time because it's nowhere near as fun or exciting as the presentation that we just heard and this is very dry material. So what we're looking at here is, the big picture is to make this official, to make it part of the ordinance so that it protects the public because when they come to use the airport, it's a published ordinance that says exactly what we charge for each thing that you want to try to do at the airport. The thing that it does for me is that it makes my job a lot easier because then I know exactly what to charge everybody for each thing that goes through. Also, if you have a changeover of airport managers, you're not charging different fees. The way that it is right now, a lot of airports end up doing that. And then you have trouble later on down the line because you're not compliant anymore because people are paying different things for different services. The other part too, for both the public and businesses that want to come in to invest in the airport, it gives them continuity and it gives them certainty because you cannot just change this. You have to do a public hearing just like this. You have to read it twice. We start with the Airport Advisory Committee, so they've already seen this. We did a workshop with the tenants. And then if someone was still upset with the way that it was going, they could come to the city council and it's part of a public process to change it. It's not just the airport manager changing what the prices are at the airport. So it works out best for both. So this brings us to that next level of professionalism and gives us that continued business friendly aspect for continuity when people are wanting to invest in the airport and the tenants that we already have just feel better too because everything's set in stone. So that's the impetus behind why this has happened. What I did was, nothing in here is new. These are all rates and charges that we had established previously. Some of them were city council policies, so the parking, aircraft parking rates, those were just a policy document that the city council had approved before. So now that policy goes away and it's incorporated in ordinance. So it talks about the rates for commercial users. The rates for commercial users are negotiated on a case by case basis. That's why when there's any kind of new commercial operation on the airport, all of those leases and contracts have to come before the city council to get approved. I can't do those and the city manager can't do those. For the private ones, what this does is it puts in the ordinance a rate per square foot and we upped that by one cent. It doesn't sound like a lot, it's five and a half percent. So we upped that. I did an evaluation of airports across New England. Some of them are as low as maybe ten cents a square foot and the higher ones are around fifty cents a square foot. So we're at the bottom end of the median here to do nineteen cents a square foot. That keeps us competitive and we have so much square footage that's under lease. We have, I think that my last count, we had a hundred and five hangars and in Bar Harbor we had fourteen. So it's far and away, there's a ton of land. And there's a lot more that's available and a lot more that's getting put under lease and lease option all the time. So these rates are working good. They keep us competitive, but they also keep us financially self-sufficient so that the airport doesn't impact taxation to run. So we're walking that fine balance to maintain that with all of these rates that get put in here. The one thing I will say about the rate for the square footage is that that gets changed every five years based on the Consumer Price Index. So in five years from now, I'll come back and say, here's what the CPI looks like for the last five years averaged out. I'd like to ask to amend, if you want to amend it, you don't have to. And then the new rate would then populate through all of the lease agreements. So that'll be the thing when we do the second read in November fifteenth, I'll ask for the final approval of this ordinance. And then the next part that Councillor Hanselman mentioned is the template for the lease agreements. And then those lease agreements all point to the ordinance and as I said, it filters right through. So that's how the whole thing works. I can go through in detail if you want to, all the different pieces of the ordinance, but we don't have to do that. Like I said, they're all existing. Some of them are intentionally vague, like for instance, if it's non-aeronautical use, like the solar project, then it has to be based on fair market value and there has to be appraisals and things of that nature. So that specifies that. It doesn't give a rate for those. So those are the differences. The other thing too that it adds that we did not have in the past is a late fee. So this is primarily for that pesky aircraft excise tax. So a lot of airplanes aren't listed in that Kelley Blue Book and it's just ten dollars. So a lot of people just don't pay the ten dollars and they just ignore the statements that I send them. So I get frustrated putting the stamp on there and printing it and sending it out for interest that's fifteen cents a month. So this adds, I talked with the finance director and she agreed with this punishment of five dollars per month for the delinquent. So that will hopefully get people to pay on. And they always end up paying. They just show up and they're like, oh yeah, it was silly. So this will hopefully get people to pay on time a little bit more frequently.
Any questions? And all this was in your backup too. Jonathan?
Yeah, just a quick question about the land lease rate. Is that currently existing elsewhere?
As far as at our airport or other airports?
For the fair market value at time of lease, that section.
Fair market value is for non-aeronautical use only.
Okay. And is that existing for other projects that are currently going on right now? Or is that, is this something new?
Nope, that's been established. So that's FAA policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else to speak for? Anyone to speak against? Hearing none, I hereby close this hearing. The next public hearing on the proposed amendment for Chapter Two Eighty of the Sanford City ordinances for the addition of Section Two Eighty dash fifteen dash fifteen campgrounds, two additions to subsection Two Eighty dash two dash two definitions and one addition to subsection Two Eighty dash fourteen dash twelve off-street parking. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Moriarty. I'm the city planner. I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance, which I drafted. On May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Sanford City Council enacted a moratorium on the development of campgrounds and directed city staff and the planning board to draft land use regulations concerning campgrounds. The planning board then held public hearings on September fourth and September eighteenth of twenty twenty-four to hear from concerned citizens on the topic, followed by a board discussion. On September eighteenth, the planning board voted to send the draft ordinance to city council for review and approval in a five to one vote. The zoning subcommittee then reviewed the ordinance on October eighth. And I am presenting the draft ordinance as is shown here. The first portion of Two Eighty Fifteen Fifteen Campgrounds is in total a new ordinance to be added. The portion shown in red has been added since the time of the zoning subcommittee in response to some comments that were made during that conversation as far as additional definitions needed. And also just from my own review of the signage and the discussions that we've had on previous approvals of campgrounds where we do require each site to be labeled or numbered, technically this would be covered by the signage chapter, but it's best to have it in the campground ordinance as well so that people looking to develop a campground can see all of the requirements at once. We have defined a campground site as well as the vegetated buffer. The existing definition of a campground and vegetation, which are then referenced in each of those new definitions, has stayed the same without changes. Additionally, the land use table is proposed to remain the same where campgrounds are currently permitted with review in the rural residential and rural mixed use zones. There's a small proposed change to the off-street parking chapter that accounts for the minimum of two hundred square feet per campground site to be allotted for off-street parking. It's cross-referenced in both the campground chapter and the off-street parking ordinance. I don't know if you've skipped it, Steve, but at Councillor Hanselman's request, I also created a graphic that will hope to depict some of these different setbacks, how they relate to campground sites, campground buffers, the exterior setback of seventy-five feet from the exterior boundary of a campground, as well as the option for the office and/or store to be located within that seventy-five foot buffer, but utilizing the setbacks of the underlying zone. The fifty-foot vegetated buffer is also depicted there. It may be displaced from the exterior boundary line, but it needs to be replaced in kind.
All right. Is there anyone, we've got two things. We're going to have, is there anyone to speak for and anyone to speak against? And I'm assuming a lot of people here want to speak. So Mara is going to be the timer and we'll go three minutes for whether you're before or against. And you need to say who you are, where you live, and are you for or against, and then your reason so that we'll know what to focus on. And then I have one email that came in that I will also read too. So you can have a seat.
Any questions?
And during the, you will be under new business, no, old business. So I'll be bringing you back. New business, yes. So I'll be bringing you back up for that. All right. So is there anyone to speak in favor? We'll do the in favors first. Anybody to speak against? And as soon as you start talking, she will start the timer.
After your name.
After your name, okay?
My name is David Hall. I've been involved in Apache Campground for forty-three years. All the subjects or complaints that the neighbors have in the proposed campground, they don't know what they're talking about. They're talking about barking dogs, they're talking about everything and anything under the sun. First of all, the young lady that drafted this new rule, I'd like to ask her, how many times has she been camping and where has she camped? Okay? You people are making a decision that's going to adversely affect my business. I've been in business for forty, actually thirty-nine years this year, but we started prior building the campground. Now you're telling me that I'm going to have to adhere to the new regulations of the setbacks and what have you. Well, if you do that, then I would greatly appreciate if you do the same thing for residential housing. Because this thing of people partying all night and it's going to be out of control and barking dogs, it's baloney. I've been doing this for forty-three years, thirty-nine, be forty years open this summer. Okay, these people, you know, you're judge, jury and executioner is what you are. These people here, they have no idea. We've been good to the community, we bring business into Jerry's Market, we bring everything in. And now I'm stifled at a hundred and fifty sites and you're going to start putting all kinds of regulations on me, which is not right. It's not right. Keep the same existing ordinance as they have. You just passed a regulation for one on the end of New Dam Road. Did they go through this baloney? No, they didn't. How about if I want to put another hundred and fifty sites on my property? Now I gotta follow all these regulations or bring everything up to standards? I've been doing this for thirty-nine years without a problem. No problems with the police department, no problems with the fire department. We've had health issues with elderly. These people, it's a community in itself. It's not a haphazard potty place. People come and enjoy, they come to vacation, they come spend money in the town of Sanford. I just, I don't understand how they can have an eight to five vote again, you know, in favor of an ordinance that nobody's ever been in my campground. You know, Ryan's over here, he's the same thing. You know, he wants to put another forty-some odd sites in. These new regulations are going to prevent him from putting those forty-some odd sites in. It's not fair to us. We've never had any problems and now you're governing from down to us. And I just don't get it. It frustrates me and it's not fair. Group of people are complaining about something that hasn't happened yet. It hasn't happened. You really need to understand, you know, I'm emotional. You know, I'm emotional because this is my livelihood. Now, all right, time? It's unfair for three minutes because you're gonna have a whole group of people complaining about what's going on.
What was his first name? What was his first name? Next? Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this? Sure. All right, thank you. Do you understand you take one off the top, one off the bottom? You got them? Give us one second to pass these down. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members, my name is Brian Dumont. I'm a lifetime resident of Sanford and President of the San Pond Association. It is with great concern for the preservation of neighborhoods of the residents of Sanford that I write and speak with you today to address our concerns regarding the moratorium on campgrounds and the revisions proposed by the planning board. We strongly encourage you to extend the moratorium and consider the following. Number one, the planning board did not address the public safety concerns of the council. Number two, the planning board did a minimal review of concerns of public citizens and did not address them directly or indirectly in their revisions of the ordinance. Number three, insufficiencies include some of the following. Allow campgrounds as permitted uses rather than conditional uses. Conditional uses, the second page of the handout I gave you has a lot of detail on what conditional uses are from this town ordinances. Permitted uses are more for run-of-the-mill projects that are normally approved by code enforcement, such as some of the things that are listed there. Towns that use conditional uses for campgrounds include large towns like ours, Burwick, Bitterford, North Burwick, Saco, Chaplain, Kidderi. Next I should, licensing was not addressed at all. It is my understanding that with the request of the council, the city planner could propose and you could adopt licensing. It's quite obvious why we would like to have some licensing involved. And that is in the case of delinquent campground owners, not all are delinquent campground owners, but if there were some, there needs to be a way to sanction and perhaps even limit their licenses accordingly. And to empower the city code enforcement to do so. A five-acre lot minimum. 11 other municipalities in York County have 10-acre lot minimums. Next, has a 75 rather than 200-foot setback. The setback area would also allow camp offices, as you saw, and store right up to a boundary line. to put it in context for you, 11 other municipalities, including Burwick, Bitterford, Saco, Waterboro, and Wells, have adopted 200-foot setbacks without exceptions. So we urge you to have no exceptions and take a minimum, a minimum of at least 100 feet, if not 150 to 200 feet. I had a video to demonstrate something about this where I recorded sound from over a quarter of a mile away. You can hear the party going on from that distance very clearly. And yet, we're looking at very minimal setbacks here. Buffering needs to be more stringently defined to prevent pre-cutting by campground applicants or by constituting grass as a potential buffer.
Time.
Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to discussions.
Thank you. I'm gonna handle this first.
One of the Pattersons.
Come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Howdy, folks. My name is Bonnie Patterson. My primary residence is 93 Sydell Road in Sanford. I am opposed to the ordinance. Professionally speaking, I have an MBA. I'm a certified project management professional. I've successfully led a $28 million organization within a Fortune 100 company. And as an associate member of the outdoor hospitality industry, I have spent the last four years collecting information and learning how to start, construct, and run a campground. As you proceed in finalizing the campground ordinance, I would like you to consider what specific problems you're trying to solve. The San Pond Association previously mentioned that they were concerned about campgrounds being mismanaged. As Dave mentioned, I have not found any evidence of this locally. As I mentioned during some of the planning board meetings, industry statistics show that winter camping is on the rise. One of the items in the draft ordinance is related to residency not being allowed by campers. I do agree with that. I do not think that campers should become residents. Another line item speaks specifically to limiting the seasonality of campgrounds. I believe that the dates of operation for campgrounds should be a business decision, not a city mandate. According to the Maine Bureau of Parks and Lakes and the USDA Forest Service, both the state of Maine and New Hampshire allow for winter camping, even tenting. Links to that data were previously provided in the planning board packet for city review, should you choose to look at them. Please consider the following. If it is safety and warmth of campers you're worried about, then consider limiting winter camping to units that are properly insulated and heated. If impact neighbors is your concern, then keep in mind that while winter camping is on the rise, nationwide, I might add, that it's still less than what you would see during the summer seasons. Neighbors, especially seasonal property owners, would not be impacted anymore in the winter than they would in the summer months. If the state is not adding seasonal limitations, then one would have to wonder, why would the city? Thank you for your consideration related to seasonality.
Thank you. And is there anybody else present who would like to speak? Come on down.
I first wanted to mention.
Your name and where you live first.
Paul Frigie, San Pond. Before we start the meter, if I could, I just wanted to note for both sides that Section 39 of your ordinances have a presumption of five minutes per person. I realize that the mayor or the chair can reduce that. A lot of people prepared based on my advice to them that Section 39 said five minutes. So if anybody feels rushed, the blame should be on me, I guess. So with that, we can begin, if it's okay. My wife and I have owned property at San Pond since 1988. We're members of the San Pond Association. We request that you table it, extend the moratorium, and study it more thoroughly. We have no problem with the planning staff. However, the planning board was very deficient in what they did. They rushed it, three minutes, and that seemed to be like we were even imposing upon them. The board did not like the fact that you sent the moratorium to them. It was obvious that they were kind of imposed upon. So after ignoring everything, returning to the council because you and you alone can do this job. This is not an attack on Apache. They're perfectly fine. We would make the following observations. The ordinance does not promote the general welfare area residence as a campground could be thrust right into the middle of an existing neighborhood. Campgrounds which are currently permitted in rural residential and rural mixed-use should not be permitted in rural residential. Rural residential means residential, doesn't mean rural business. You should change the ordinance to just not allow them, move them to rural mixed-use only. Now, a point that's a little, well, actually quite important, is they should be treated as conditional uses. We sent a little memo that explains what that is. There are more than 40 other conditional uses in your ordinance. Seven, at least seven other cities and towns in York County have them for campgrounds. And it allows a tailored, thoughtful evaluation of the unusual circumstance. There are big campgrounds, big areas, hundreds of acres, no neighbors. You don't need that review there. They don't even need setbacks there. Do anything they want and leave it to the management. But if you put a campground where people already live, we need conditional use or the neighbors cannot be protected. We support a 10-acre minimum, a 200-acre, 200-foot setback, which 11 other towns have. That should be from structures, but it could be from property lines or 175 feet from property lines. Within the buffers, there shouldn't be anything else. There should be true buffers, true setbacks, no offices, no, no horseshoe pits, no volleyball. If you're gonna protect people, do it. Whatever decision you make on that. And buffers need to be tightened up.
Time's up, thank you.
Buffering need to be tightened up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? One moment, we have somebody coming down.
Need a little help with a PowerPoint?
He has a presentation he wants to.
Okay.
It's a small one, four slides. But it'll help illustrate some things that are hard to talk about.
Thank you. Visuals are good.
Is that showing up?
He's doing it back there. There you go.
Ah, great. Well, good evening. My name is Steve Weiner. I have lived in Sanford for 20 years. And I appreciate all the work that's been done so far on this item. And I'm very hopeful, like Paul and, Paul and Brian have said, that we can continue to work on this item as I think there's still more work that needs to be done. I'm gonna talk about setbacks and buffers and one other item. So what I have before you is some information that was pulled together by the planning board where they reached out and looked at what 20 other, 28 other cities and towns have done for, for their, for their planning. And this is part one of some of the information that was collected. But I just wanted to show you some of the information that they collected. It was, it was quite a bit. But I really wanted to focus in on the second slide, which has to do with, this is where we start getting into some of this setback information. And all of this information was reviewed at the planning board and was discussed and some information. So there you can see in the first column, they start getting into setbacks from the exterior lot lines. And you can see a couple of them had 100 feet setback. And go to like the fourth column, you can see they start talking about setbacks from residential homes. And there you start seeing where they had the setbacks established at 200 feet from the residential homes. And all this is, you know, valuable information. So if you go through all the pages there, I'll go to the next slide. Okay, good. So if you wanna look at a summary, you can see of the 28 cities and towns that actually were able to pull information on. It looked like exterior lot lines. There were eight that had 100-foot setbacks. There were 11 that had 200-foot setbacks from the residential homes. So this, I thought, was very helpful information for the planning board. And I was hoping the council would find it very informative as well. Because I think one of the things we wanna consider is how to, you know, what are other cities and towns doing? So the planning board considered some of this information. I think one of the issues that became, this is where you've been hearing some of us refer to a 200-foot setback. But one of the issues is when you have a setback from a residential home, it's hard to administer. It's hard to go out to the field. You know, how far away is that home from the property line? Property lines are easy, but, you know, it's hard to go to a home and go on, on the land and find out how far that home is from, from the lot line. Is time up already? Don't tell me that. No, anyways, they couldn't use a 200-foot setback. So I'll go to my next slide. Shoot, you're gonna throw me away. I gotta sit down?
Yeah.
You do, but you can provide these slides to the city and we can have the ability to look at them.
Okay.
Okay.
I will close with, but you can take a look at a half hour, half-acre lot and see that in a typical half-acre lot, that 200-foot setback is gonna provide the average lot from the property line, they're gonna get 120-foot setback from the property line. So in most cases, our 75 feet.
Thank you. I can't give you more than others.
Okay, I'll send it to you guys.
Please do send it to us, though.
And he'll help you take it out so you don't destroy.
He's closing in on you.
And, and I'm just gonna point out, if there's enough, if there's enough discussion here that we're going to meet, there's likelihood the zoning subcommittee will meet again. And I'd just like to say that we'll probably allow some public discussion, not like, not like speeches or anything, discussion about details in order to try to work some things out.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
And I just wanna point out, the handouts are really great 'cause it helps us revisit things. So your handouts would be fantastic for us to have. There was somebody else who was gonna move a chair and come on down.
I moved the chair.
Turn things around.
My name's Joe Hardy. I live at Wells, but I'm a property owner in Sanford. I've been a teacher, consulted into a lot of different things. I've also written a book that you may be familiar with. It's a comprehensive study of the Mazum River. It's titled Mills on the Mazum. So I may have spoken to one of your groups. My personal experience as a owner at San Pond is what informs my remarks. So I sort of, I wanna say something about that before I talk about the ordinance as a whole. I think I get the longevity award. I've been at the San Pond since I was eight years old. In 1952, my parents bought a lot and we've been there ever since, although the lot has changed. So I've seen a lot of things at the pond in these years. It's been a place of tranquility, friendliness, owners and camp owners and cottages that ring the pond. It's been a nice community. A few years ago, we did need to accept a new neighbor, that was Hotopia. Hotopia has changed the pond somewhat. It can accept up to 500 campers, so on a busy summer day. So I'm particularly concerned about what another campground would do at San Pond. And I know we're talking about an ordinance in general, but I think this leads me to the question of density. How many campgrounds can you have in a particular body of water? There's nothing in the current plan proposal that addresses that. I mean, how many acres of, of water, of a stream, or a pond, or a lake, does it take to provide sufficient space for campers and existing residents to abide, abide one another? That's not been addressed. I mean, San Pond is a small pond. Can it accept two large campgrounds? That's a question that needs to be given considerable attention. I wanna go on. I want to go on for just a moment and say something. I support the comments that have been said by Judge Fritchie. I support the two hundred foot setback. I've attended the planning board meetings. And I'm a little critical of how they make decisions regarding the setback. Someone at the planning board mentioned a hundred feet, someone else mentioned fifty feet, and someone, a third person, said, "Well, let's split the difference, seventy-five feet." And that's how the decision was made. They didn't walk out in the woods. They didn't ask for informed opinions. They didn't look at other ordinances to a great extent. They simply, for convenience, made an arbitrary decision. I'm afraid they've done that on other decisions as well. And that's why I think this is an important matter. It's an important matter for those of us who are in communities where campgrounds may appear. We need to think seriously about a lot of the issues that have been mentioned. And so I won't bother you more, but I hope to have sufficient time, perhaps tonight or later on, to speak more on some of these issues. So I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Oh, perfect. Good job.
Anyone else?
Yep, there is. We're trying to get through the audience first.
And I would like to remind the council that this is a hearing and we are hearing from the public, not from the council. So no comments.
Hello, my name is Holly Bennett. And I have lived in Sanford as a full-time resident for twenty-three years and with my husband and my three daughters. I have an undergraduate degree in exercise science and I have a master's degree in health education. I've been a health education teacher for twenty-six years. One of the things that we talk about in my classroom is environmental health and mental health. And I really like to apply that concept to the incidents that we're seeing here for this ordinance. This specific ordinance does affect me personally because I live at Ninety-One Country Club Road Two, which is near Sand Pond, but I'm speaking for the greater good for Sanford and for that general ordinance. I'm speaking about setbacks and buffers. And I want you to understand, because I think visualizing what seventy-five feet really means is important. And I disagree with a haphazard decision that the planning board made in coming up with seventy-five feet. Seventy-five feet can be something as long as a tennis court. Seventy-five feet can be something as long as a semi truck. How about a baseball field? Baseball fields, we look at them, they're huge. Do you think that that's seventy-five feet? No. How about running from home to first base? Do you think that's seventy-five feet on a baseball field? No, that's ninety feet. And so what is proposed is that they're going to be able to put a business as close to my home, closer to my home than what is allowed a runner to go from home to second base, to first base. I have three children. I have daughters that live on the second floor of my house. We purchased property in a residential area, fully expecting the land around us to be purchased and possibly put another house there. We did not expect for something to happen like a campground. Under the general recommendation, a campground could be allowed to be constructed and recreational vehicles allowed in spaces that exist in smaller than a baseball field. This is a rural area. Many of these campgrounds are proposed in rural spaces, which are in our communities of residence. Not all campgrounds are created equal, and the board must not forget to acknowledge that these changing industry standards from what has been before. Camping is not just going to a national park. Camping is now much busier with new types of campers and new types of structures that are being put on these platforms. You can require buffers to help justify in your mind that seventy-five feet will be adequate. However, I think that we need to specifically look at what the definition of these buffer zones are because no ornamental grass will protect our residential privacy with a seventy-five foot setback. In conclusion, we need to identify the vegetative buffer and it needs to be well-defined. We need to look at what most towns around us have done and go with a larger setback.
Holly, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you looking deeply into this situation.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Guy Chabot. I live at number nine Sand Pond Road, Sanford, Maine. I lived in Sanford, Maine for twenty-eight years. I'm not an incidental resident. I purposely moved to Sanford. Background of myself, I'm a registered nurse. I am a combat veteran. Lieutenant Colonel retired with the United States Army, medical department with a combat support hospital. Not just one of those people. I'm talking on behalf of, you know, the future and what campgrounds and the ordinance means for the future, for other campgrounds, for this community. It was clear to me that we felt that the board was burdened by our request. Obtuse is a good word to describe some of the behavior that I witnessed. It seemed wholly disinterested, haphazard. A little bit more forethought needs to be going into this if we're going to be talking about campgrounds and what it means to Sanford, not for just now, but for the future. All campgrounds should be permitted uses and not conditional uses.
I think they want you to...
Opposite. A two hundred foot setback is more than ideal than a fifty or seventy-five foot setback. It's insufficient. We just heard earlier in a presentation that there was some kind of fire with a camper. So vegetative buffer should be more defined and not left to a case-by-case basis. Seasonal camping should be considered. And a ten acre minimum lot size, not five acre, should be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present here who would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Patterson. I live in Sanford. One of the big questions tonight is how do we balance the main Department of Environmental Protection's desire for people to be able to swim and boat in Sanford's lakes, rivers, and ponds with the goal of the opposition, who, as Brian Dumont stated publicly and is on record of saying that his goal, in the association's goal, is to stop the campground. It's not to update a moratorium, it's to stop the campground. He said it on record. The DEP's website is very transparent about what destroys natural bodies of water, and it isn't swimmers and paddleboarders. It's the clear cutting at the water's edge and septic systems at cottages that even today are failing and potentially seeping effluent into our highly prized natural bodies of water. And by the way, any natural body of water over ten acres is considered a great pond and under the protection of the DEP. The DEP will not approve any project that they feel will endanger a body of water. But they absolutely do not allow clear cutting at the water's edge. And even this year, by the opposition, as shown in this diagram, they're still clear cutting at the pond. In the coming weeks, we are trying to update an ordinance that will impact the owners of existing campgrounds. Some of these campgrounds have borders to neighbors that can't even be seen for over a thousand feet. Yet as a community, we are going to prevent these fifty-plus-year-old campgrounds from continuing to grow because a seventy-five or two hundred foot setback prevents them from using their land. These campgrounds are owned by people who have invested heavily into Sanford and do much more for our community than a few dozen or so opposing and mostly seasonal residents. Let's consider the passage from the 2005 Sanford Comprehensive Plan. Quote, "The policy of the town should be to limit new shorefront development in accordance with the state shoreline zoning guidelines," end quote. I'm pleading with the town. In the best interest of our community, don't let a few opposers prevent Sanford from taking a greater role in a $1.1 trillion recreation industry that could play a positive role in changing our city's direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read an email that came. And what I've done was I'm not going to read her whole email because that would take me way over the time. So I tried to pick out her major points, so I'm not missing anything. And her name is Eileen Monro- Maroney. And she lives at eighty-three Seidel Road in Sanford. And she introduced herself and spoke about some of the ordinances, but it was more a feeling. And so I'll go down to her points. A setback should be a minimum of two hundred feet from the property line and should include fifty well-defined vegetative buffer to help abate sound. Sound travels and RVs running their AC units and generators would disturb neighbors. Additionally, campers are on vacation and may have a tendency to enjoy their evenings, which is what vacations are for. Butters are not on vacation. They still need to get up early and go about their day, hence the need for sound barriers and further setbacks. In order to maintain the intent and the integrity of the vegetative buffer and setbacks, cart paths, walking paths, roads, access and walking paths should not be allowed within the setback and, more importantly, in the vegetative buffer zone, safety under safety and security. On-site management, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, which would include an office for camper registration and check-in to include number of people, pets, vehicles, and also a twenty-four hour phone number to get in touch with onsite management. Operating season should be limited to six months, limited to two weeks' stay within a thirty-day period. A better fit for campgrounds would be a mixed-use zone. Campgrounds should not be intertwined with residential area. Campground ordinances must be written in such a manner to be good neighbors to Sanford residents and allow an enjoyable experience for the camper. As a taxpayer, we are consistent of revenue for the city. If our property, she means as a permanent resident there, somebody who owns a house, if our property values decrease, not only will our future be impacted, but the city's revenue will also decrease. I appreciate the city council's interest in listening to the concerns of the residential property owners. So we will enter her whole document into the record. Now, is there somebody online? Is Kathy? Kathleen? Would you please introduce your first and last name and where you're from?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Kathleen Walsh. I'm with Advanced Outdoor Solutions. And I design, build, and third-party manage RV parks and campgrounds across the United States. So I, first of all, want to say thank you for the thoughtful consideration and what the work done so far by the Planning Commission. You've been called haphazard this evening. I think your work has been anything but haphazard.
Point of order.
I've had an opportunity to read it.
Hold on one moment. We'll start your timer again. She may be from out of Sanford, but this is not under public participation. This is under the agenda, and she is representing a group that is here. So she is allowed to speak.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, which is different. All right, please go ahead.
Okay. Again, my name is Kathleen Walsh. I'm with Advanced Outdoor Solutions. And I design, build, and third-party manage RV parks and campgrounds across the U.S. I'm currently very honored to be working with many municipalities, the state of Kentucky, the city of Waukata, Indiana, and I've written and helped guide many municipalities on their ordinances. The Planning Commission has been called this evening haphazard. I think that that's just the opposite. I've had an opportunity to read what you've put together so far, and I believe it's been very thoughtfully prepared. I would like to point out, overall in the industry, some of the things that you might want to consider. In most municipalities where I'm working, the setback is about fifty feet. That is a fifty feet with a vegetated buffer as well. I agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman from Apache. What these butters are concerned about never happens. We have quiet hours from 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Generators aren't running. People aren't partying. I am in my RV. I've been living in it for a month, going across country. I'm in one of my parks in Oklahoma right now. There is no one outside, and most people have already gone in for the night. So they're respectful people. They're paying a high average daily rate. I'm traveling in my RV with my husband, who is a federal prosecutor, and I am a lifelong business owner. We are not dregs of society who are whooping it up to all hours of the night. The other thing I listened to tonight from the town, it was very disturbing because I know a lot of towns deal with this. You're dealing with addictions, syringes, homelessness. Those things don't come into your communities with RV parks and campgrounds. They don't. Those aren't problems you bring in when you approve RV parks and campgrounds. What you do bring in is revenue, tax dollars, from people who aren't going to stretch your services. So between lodging tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, you're bringing in revenue for your emergency services from people who aren't going to typically use your emergency services. And finally, I just want to point out that outdoor hospitality is indeed a $1.1 trillion industry. Many of the parks that I've stayed in on this trip, when I'm a long way between my managed parks, have been county, state-owned parks. Municipalities understand, if they don't get with the program, they're missing the boat. And so I've stayed at some wonderful city-owned facilities. So I want to thank you for your consideration. I want to assure you that many of the things that the neighbors are bringing up simply don't happen in RV parks and campgrounds. And the people who vacation this way are very respectful of your community and your environment.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Is there another person online?
Yes, she's right here.
Go ahead, tell your name and where you live. We can't hear you. You have to unmute. It'll look like a little microphone with a line through it. Still can't hear you. Don't you just love computers?
Oh, I think we're set.
There you go. You got it.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mary Chaka. I've been a part-time resident on Civil Road and a full-time, tax-paying property owner in Sanford for thirty-eight years. I'm concerned about several of the listed standards in the proposed campground ordinances. The first concern is that campgrounds are allowed to be built in any kind of residential area. In this case, the proposed, in the proposed ordinance, rural residential zones. I'm concerned because residential zones have neighborhoods. And campgrounds are often large-scale businesses that can overtake and infringe upon established homes and neighborhoods where people have been living in quiet, peaceful environments for many years. If a campground full of RVs, tiny homes, offices, pools, or whatever are to be allowed in these neighborhoods, let us at least require adequate borders of two hundred foot setbacks and dense, high vegetation that might mitigate some of the noise, light, and ugliness that property owners... property owners and residents will have to endure. And let us limit the operation of campgrounds to less than six months of the year. Also, please consider conditional use permits and annual licensing to give the city greater discretion and control when reviewing campground proposals and to help the code enforcement office to make and enforce campground rules and regulations. Finally, as a former resident of York, Maine, I'd like to offer a word of caution to too much development and tourism. Although you may have promises of millions of dollars flowing into Sanford, overdevelopment is a trade-off to the quality of life for your citizens. I'd like to say that I don't ever undervalue the current worth of Sanford. It is the treasure for its lakes, ponds, rivers, and woods. So please conserve and protect the beauty and health of these natural resources as much as you can. Thank you for your time and consideration and for the work that you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? I think that's it for online. That's it for emails. Jamie?
I just wanted to make you guys aware, I did receive a phone call from one of our existing campgrounds in town. They're not fond of public speaking, so they didn't want to get up and speak tonight. But they did want me to let you guys know that they are not in favor of the 75-foot setback requirement that is being proposed. They are in the works of starting an expansion on their campground, and they said that if we do that 75-foot setback, it will severely limit or prohibit them from able to do the expansion that they've been planning for about 10 years to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good. Anybody else? Hearing none, I close this hearing.
Can I just ask a question? This is not a comment.
You wait till we get to it on the agenda.
Do it before people leave.
They won't leave.
They won't leave.
They're gonna want to hear our discussion.
Okay. Now, there is no consent agenda. Now, under old business, an order the city council hereby ordains amends to the City of Sanford General Assistance Ordinance. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Moore just made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? A second?
I will. I will second that.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? So that's how many? And any opposed? One opposed. All right. We're all set. And under, still under old business, in order to discuss and vote approval on the amendment to the master lease agreement for Anderson Learning Center to Sanford-Springvale Development Corp. And who is?
I think we're gonna have Steve describe the changes and then have Nate comment on the board, SSDC board.
Don't feel under pressure, Nate.
No, no, no. I was actually going to ask a question, given that I am president of this, at Sanford-Springvale Development Corporation. I didn't know if it was, you know...
You represent the city council, so it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve's gonna explain the changes, and then you can make any comments.
Absolutely.
So the master lease agreement is the, exactly that. The master lease for, between the city of Sanford, now city, this is written many years ago when it was town, so that correction has been made from city to town. It's the agreement between the Sanford-Springvale Development Corporation that operates and manages the Anderson Learning Center, which is a city-owned facility. So this was brought to the attention as of late. The lease has been upgraded from city to town. No changes to the description. Property remains the same. Use of the property does not change significantly. Rent, the rent is a dollar per year. That did not change. Payments shall be sent to the finance director. Start of the amendment starts on section four, the annual financial review. This now provides for an annual financial review to be submitted to the finance director, unless he shall provide the necessary financial documents in the event that the audit is deemed necessary, unless he agrees to cooperate fully to bear the costs associated with such an audit. So that's a newly amended section. In section five, pursuant to legal council recommendation, there is a definitive termination date that's set out to 2049. The reason being, by having that termination date in there, it's not for an indefinite or permanent period of time, and the lease must be reviewed upon renewal at that point in time, if not before. Subsection six, capital improvements, was a significant point of discussion. Previously, the master lease had a poor description of what was a capital improvement and what was not. So greater emphasis was put on giving examples and better delineation of what is a capital improvement, which really gets to major installations such as HVAC systems, new plumbing within the systems, replacing 30% or more of the building components, such as roof, windows, floors, electrical systems, boilers, HVACs, et cetera. And that the SSDC shall maintain a six-year capital plan, no different than other city departments. Must maintain a six-year capital plan to allow for the city to anticipate and budget for capital needs in the future, should they be necessary. Repairs and maintenance, again, more examples were put into the repairs and maintenance as to what is ongoing operational repairs as opposed to capital improvements. So those are further described here in the amended section. Utilities, the SSDC is, there, must provide for all of the utilities. Parking, this is significant. There's three major entities that share in the parking space there. It's a city-owned parking lot, but the master lease agreement provides that the SSDC actually manages that as from an operational basis. We build back the other two entities, the current courthouse, which is gonna go to the Sanford Housing Authority, and the library, participate in that parking agreement. Access to the premise, no changes there. Just updated to the city. There's notification, should the city need access. Easement and agreements and accu-ferences, no changes there. Quiet enjoyment by the leaseholder, nothing there. Default clause was still intact. No need to change that. Waiver of the lease covenants and agreements, no changes there. Notices to be provided to the city, as well as the Sanford-Springvale Development Corporation. Sublease, so the less fee required to provide the city with a true and complete list of all subleases in effect and their expiration dates upon request. The SSDC and the city have talked about the benefit, there must be a level of public benefit to the entities that are renting there. Assignment, the agreement shall not be assigned or transferred without prior express recognition of the current lease. Lease payments, subject to annual budget meeting between the parties and all rental parties. The SSDC Board of Directors will be reviewing those. Insurances, we had this updated from legal council, provides for the requisite $600,000 for liability coverage, which is beyond that, will be covered under main tort claims. Indemnity, no changes there. So under possession, the facility, the notification and the requirements, no changes there. Damage to the premise, no changes. Compliance by laws, no changes there. Transfer fee for service, third-party rights and amendment, no changes there. So that is the substance of those amendments that came out of that review process, and I will pause there.
And I want to say Nate Hitchcock is the chair, is, are you called the chair?
The technical term is president.
Oh, president. Whoa. He is the president of the Anderson Learning Center Development Corp.
But he couldn't say no.
He couldn't say no.
Right.
No.
But thanks, Nate.
But, from what I've heard, from not only Steve who attends, but from other people who attend, you're doing a phenomenal job, and the meetings are run very smoothly, probably one of the better meetings that happen here in Sanford. So you're doing a fantastic job. So you want to make a comment on this?
Sure. I'll be brief. I know we have other things on the agenda. Just, the Sanford-Springvale Development Corporation, people may not know, is a nine-person board of city representatives and residents of Sanford and Springvale that come together to essentially oversee the operation of the Anderson Learning Center in Springvale. You know, our mission is to provide, you know, space for organizations that benefit the public benefit at a reduced rate of rent. Again, for those people who would want to come help serve our citizens, who may not be able to afford what the rent currently is, we work on that. We have a nine-person board that is very, very attentive to the needs of what the board, of what the building requires. And I will say, one of our biggest focuses going forward is to make sure that it's operating on a budget that is responsible. You know, for people who may have listened to city council meetings in the past, there was a, an issue regarding some ideas about what the city was required to spend for capital improvement, what the organization was. I can tell you, the board is very focused on creating a capital improvement program that lays out what is needed in the upcoming years. That way, the city can appropriately budget for what it pays for, but also the organization can budget for what it needs to pay for according to this lease. So this essentially ties up the responsibilities of each party, and I know that we have a very motivated working board.
All right. Do we have any questions? Can I have a motion to approve this amendment? Pete?
I motion to approve this amendment.
Can I have a second? Anne?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Now, move on to new business, because we've already done the first one. So we're going to the second one. And this is an order to approve the proposed amendment to chapter 280 of the Sanford City ordinances for addition of the subsection 280-15-15 campgrounds, two additions to subsection 280-2-2 definitions, and one addition to subsection 280-14-12 off-street parking. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the first, so we are not voting now. Bob, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, it's a comment now, I guess. First of all, I want to say that I certainly appreciate all the work that's gone into this with all the municipal employees and members of the citizens presenting their positions and all that. So, given that, I'm gonna ask for a show of hands. This is why it wasn't a comment. I think we have a fair representation of people, members of the public, who are involved in this. So this is just for members of the public that are sitting in the audience. How many of you are 100% behind the changes or the ordinance here tonight as it was presented?
I'd like to point out, we had nobody speaking in favor.
Right. Well, that's my point, on both sides.
Yeah, both sides.
How many people are 90% in favor? Okay, how many people are, we'll say, 51%? So you would be 1% and the majority in favor. So it's fair to say that, given what's here, as the comments reflected, and is a point I'm trying to bring about, nobody's happy with this ordinance as it is. So that was my comment.
Erin, can, one of the people here made a comment that he's been in business 39 years, and if he added on, he would also have to go back and change, sounded like what was already pre-existing. Is that the case?
So, pre-existing, non-conforming use would continue as is if there are new campsites proposed? I believe that would, I don't know.
So, everything that's legally existent is what we call legally non-conforming, what the real world calls grandfathered. So it would not affect what is legally existent. What it would affect is if those campgrounds came in for an expansion to add more sites to, sorry, to change anything, then anything that is new from the date this ordinance is enacted, if it's enacted, then that new stuff would have to come in compliance. But what is existent legally is grandfathered.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Just thought I'd need to clear that part up.
So not going back and changing what's already there, but the new portions of the existing thing.
If they added on.
Correct.
Okay. Good. Anne?
Madam Mayor, I just have a comment before we deep dive into this, and it's that I take objection to some of the criticisms of our planning board. As somebody who attended either via Town Hall Streams or Zoom, the meetings, as well as review the in-depth and fairly complex packets that were provided and presumably reviewed by the planning board and the staff time that went into it, I just take objection to some of those criticisms because I think that they responded to their quest put forth to them by the city councils. I just wanted to say that before we deep dive.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So what we're gonna do now is, and I don't know who we're gonna ask questions of, but we're, I had more, while people were talking, make a list. As a point came up, she just kept writing them down. And so what we're gonna do is, if we have questions about it or discussion, we're gonna talk about it, and then, so that we can help the, because this is going to go to the zoning board, then we will just do a thumbs up or a thumbs down that we agree with this, or we don't agree with this, so they will know what they need to tackle. And so the first one is going to be the 75-foot...
We're gonna tackle the big bear first. How's that?
Buffer zone.
One comment first?
Yes, you, of course.
Just so you guys know, the moratorium was enacted on May 21st for 180 days, which means it expires on November 17th.
Yeah.
We know.
That date is prior to the next subcommittee day and/or second read, if you postpone it till after that. So if we decide that's the route, we are gonna have to extend the moratorium.
We know on November 15th, which is our next meeting, we would have to...
November 12th.
Okay.
November 12th is?
Yeah. November 12th is our next.
Our next meeting, and we would have to extend it.
Yeah, we've discussed that.
Thank you. Because if we forgot, that would be bad.
So, I made the list. I'm gonna make a, obviously, the ordinance is currently proposed at 75 foot. We've all, there, we've heard comments, they want to go lower than 75 feet, they want to be at 100 feet, a lot of places are at 200 feet. The other thing I want to, so that's a question. However, I would like to ask a question of the two of you, because I've looked at all of the campgrounds. I think there are some fears existing that probably don't need to be there. However, there are other ordinance I've looked at that discuss not, not just distance from lotline as a setback determiner, but distance from a residential structure on a butter. So if you're in a rural area, you have huge lots, like some of these campgrounds do, the structure of your butter is that much further away because you're using the lot, their lot also, as the setback. So, other than just the distance, the setback, comment on what you feel about a lotline setback versus a butter's residential structure setback?
So, it falls on the shoulders of the code enforcement office to enforce the code, and unfortunately, we do not have enough members of staff to physically go out and measure from the structure of a building to a campground. It's just not a possibility with our current setup in town. So it is an onerous ask to require someone to physically go out and measure from each individual structure and each point of that structure, which may or may not be closest. We're not surveyors. I'm not even a code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officers are not surveyors. So measuring from a lotline can be done from a desktop and can be done by our current staff, as we have.
So you recommend lotline?
Or more staff.
That's not gonna happen.
It's going on record.
Then I can see the taxes.
And the reason I asked, I didn't intend for it to be, I intended it to be a determiner when they come in for their plan, not for it to be for each individual. Like, on the plan, you'll, you know, you kind of prove that where you're proposing the new camp sites is far enough away from the residential structure of your butter. I'm not saying that you would go out there every single time. I... I, I was proposing that, could it be on the plan, I guess?
So I'll just make a few clarifying points. Currently, we don't have any sections of ordinance that measures from a dwelling. It is part of a discussion in our mineral extraction ordinance, which has not been approved yet. It is still being worked on. That, that ordinance is proposing to go, one of the standards is proposing to go from a residential structure. The problem with the residential structure setback is, as Aaron mentioned, but on top of that, if you go from a property line, it's a straight line. If you go from a residence, it could be a big jagged W or S or any of the above.
Circular house.
So it, it makes it very, very, very hard to create, to document, to check, to enforce. And then comes, down the road, I, I add a new house. And now that house is right on the property line, or 15 foot, whatever the required setback is. Now, campground's existing at that point, so it, it doesn't really pertain to them. But now they're closer and they start complaining, "Oh, my God, I didn't, I didn't realize there's a campground there." And I, and I know that's kind of a stretch saying it, but we get these calls all the time with people, they didn't realize they bought an extra gravel pit, or they didn't realize they bought an extra Hannover, or, or I could go all night. So the, that planning board, it was discussed that really, just for all-around ease of approvals, the, the property line would be the, the better option as a, as a measurement tool.
Okay.
So on that issue, since now that we've heard it, we'll stick to the setback and just figure out whatever, how everybody feels, and then we'll move on to the next topic. That way, we can keep it kind of structured.
Anyone with an opinion? Pete?
Yeah, I feel that 50 feet is, is good for a campground setback. The ones that are in the woods, not off the road, not off any roads, but I feel 50 feet is fine. I think that's good. And that wouldn't eliminate, that wouldn't limit the existing campgrounds, because it's not just this one campground we're dealing with. We're dealing now with three or more now, and many more. So I feel 50 feet for any expansions is, is protecting the citizens. So that's, that's my opinion.
Anyone else?
I'm jotting notes.
Nate?
So before we really get into the specific number of setback, I think it's important to discuss the, and I'll just hint on it, the vegetative buffer. That was one of the discussions that was made. Because we have a definition of vegetative buffer of being eight feet tall and 50 feet wide. But I don't think we can really legislate density, because that's the main part of a vegetative buffer. It's like, okay, what's in, in between that eight feet by 50 feet to block sound? And I think it's difficult, we're essentially trying to, essentially, we try to legislate nature if we try to do something like that. So I don't think we necessarily touch vegetative buffer because it makes it difficult to really discuss. But because of that, I think setbacks, a further setback makes sense, only because we can't legislate the vegetative buffer. And so it kind of balances the fact of like, we're not going to put an onus on a property developer to plant, you know, certain, like, per certain square foot or square mile, like, what kind of density. But alternatively, there is a, a larger setback.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to share an opinion?
So, yeah, I, I think 50 feet's fine. I do think we need to talk about the vegetative buffer as well.
It's on the list.
Yeah.
We will.
We'll get there, I guess. Thank you.
Anne?
Uh, first, I want to thank Aaron for the diagram. I thought that was helpful. And I was confused and needed clarification at zoning about the interplay between the 50-foot buffer and the 75-foot, um, you know, setback, and also the ability to use some of that space in the 25 feet between the two. So it was good conversation to understand that, and the diagram does help. I think that sometimes, not sometimes, often, we compromise, right, when we're looking, some part of your board or your committee is looking for 100 feet or more, and others looking for 50. I feel like 75 is actually a very, like, economically, like, on the side of economic development and being friendly to campgrounds in our community, based on the fact that so many other campgrounds in York County are at 200 feet. So I, I, I would have liked 100, but based on the planning board's recommendation at 75, I'm, I'm actually okay with that. I would prefer, if I was changing it, I would perform more, a greater setback, not lesser.
So, you know, I, the, the major rub here, overall, as I'm seeing, is a campground going into what's being called a residential area. And one of the things that's, that's likely going to happen is, it's a fairly large campground. I mean, let's just say they close down, you know, they have quiet. Okay, right. It, it, you know, they're open till 10 o'clock, let's say. There's still going to be people coming in and out at night. They're going to have headlights on in their cars. Those headlights are likely going to shine in some of the residential people's houses' windows. There'll be noise going in and out of the road, and so on. So I am, 100 feet sounds good to me for, for some space there. And also something that's going to, I, I don't know how you're going to block noise without putting some kind of acoustic fence up or something like that, but some, some higher shrubs, I forget what they call them, the, like, the tall pines, they put them in a row.
Arborvitae? Arborvitae?
Yeah, arborvitae, is that right? Did I say that right?
Arborvitae.
Arborvitae, okay. All right, I came close. You know, something like that, that's, that's kind of also block the lights and make life better for the people, for the, for the people that have their, their houses down in that area.
Madam Mayor?
And I'm leaning more towards a 50-foot barrier buffer and 100 feet. And I know there was a comment, well, they didn't think you could make a 50-foot barrier. Well, you can. It's vegetation, it's not that hard to do. Anybody who does gardening knows how you can do that with trees and stuff, and you can block the sound. So, but having said that, if you are at zoning, and the majority of zoning, say, they want it at 75, I would go with 75. I would prefer the 100 because I, I, because of the sound and because of the amount of back and forth, and, but I would go with the 75. I would not agree to 50.
Okay. So it is leaning the same or higher, based on what I'm hearing, so. So the buffer, I-
Yep, go ahead. Morris got to give her a talk.
I was leaning 100. So, you know, and I think people knew that ahead of time, but I was leaning towards 100. I'm not, I'm definitely nowhere near the 200. I agree with everybody, the vegetative buffer is probably a good next conversation. So my question to you, before we start that discussion, I read in a lot of the ordinances that they say screen from site. Can the vegetated buffer be defined in this instance as screened from site? So whatever they put up has to be dense enough for that. Or do you think the 50-foot with just plantings? Because they, there is a general concern that it's dense enough and can provide the buffer people are looking for.
I mean, I think there is opportunity to elaborate on what is considered a vegetated buffer. We could do that within the definition, which would affect not just campgrounds, but every other ordinance that refers to a vegetated buffer. Or we could make that distinction within the campground ordinance. That was something that is, I think, important to think about because we're proposing definitions for more than one zone and use. To create a vegetated buffer that is blocked from sight, is that how you said it?
They said screened from sight.
Screened from sight. I have seen ordinances that require a certain percentage of opacity on vegetated buffers. That is, again, difficult to enforce. Screened from sight could be somewhat subjective. And I guess I would look to you all if that's something that you would want to explore more.
Should I go in reverse and make the mayor go first?
Sure. What's the next one on the list?
Screen, vegetated buffer, the vegetated buffer.
Oh.
So, with the 50-foot buffer, well, the, not the setback, the vegetated, what's the difference between 50-foot setback with that buffer on there? Is it the same thing? And that would solve this 25-feet difference that we always have?
Uh, right. So I think we need to clarify, a setback is just the measured distance.
Correct.
So we're measuring from the exterior boundary line to the first point where a new campground site could be located. That's the setback. The buffer is an area that needs to be vegetated. We're calling it a vegetated buffer, which we've defined. It doesn't necessarily need to occur on that exterior boundary line. It could be offset. For instance, in the image that I presented, there was a store and a pool, and those were based on the underlying zone setback, which is only 40 feet in the rural residential zone, for an example. And the 50-foot buffer of vegetation was then placed behind that. So still separating the campground sites from any abutting use, but not necessarily at the road.
Okay.
The reason being because campgrounds, being a business, would like their offices to be visible from the road. So that was a comment that was made during one of the planning board discussions. They have the option to set their office all the way back at the middle of their campground if they so choose. But if they would like some visibility so that people can locate their business, they can follow the underlying zone setbacks.
Okay.
Which would apply to any other business.
Okay. And Nate?
And, I'm sorry, my, my question was, if we go at 75, 100, or 200, the way it's looking, what I'm hearing from existing businesses is two campgrounds will not expand. So we're just going to, that's, that's going to stop that right away. So I just want that out there.
Pete, we weren't considering 200.
Yeah. I know. But this is two existing tax-paying businesses in our town that will not expand now. And that's something that we should look at.
Well, when you actually look at the, the GIS aerial, there's quite a bit of distance on both of those campgrounds. So, of distance.
It's got a lot of space.
Just, just so it's out there, I just wanted that to go, not go without saying, okay?
Nate?
Oh, just one of the perils of going first is I actually realized I didn't give a specific number. So-
Higher.
Higher, but I was leaning at the 100.
Okay, all right, thank you. What is?
How do you feel about, you said, you mentioned the vegetated buffer. Do you have any other comments before we?
Well, I mean, I think, um, I think I'll just lean on the fact that I think it's difficult to, to legislate it. I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But, you know, when it comes to vegetative buffer, it's, you know, again, we're, we're discussing new campgrounds coming in. There may not be any vegetation there at all. Now we're essentially, you know, you know, telling people about the width and the height, which is fine. But again, it's, it's the density that is what makes it effective. So I think, I could be wrong, but I think it's difficult to legislate that. And so that's why I'm in favor probably more of a, of a setback than I am actual defining a vegetated buffer more, because it does become very subjective.
Okay. All right. Anne?
And I would, just to piggyback on Council Hitchcock's comment, I think the combination of the two is really important, right? So it's the interplay of the vegetated buffer and the setbacks, and how those interplay that creates effectiveness. And, and from my perspective, thinking broadly about this, and mineral extraction was mentioned earlier, you know, we're, we're not trying to have it be that a butter's can't see what's happening next door to them, right? Because that's not realistic. I lived next, in close proximity to a mineral extraction site, and I could hear them at, you know, 8:00 AM drinking my coffee on the back deck. So you try to create ordinances that reduce impact to a butter's, but-
It's never going to negate.
Right. We're, we're never going to eliminate it or make it completely non-impactful, because we live in a community with neighbors. We don't live, you know, on 100 acres in the middle of northern Maine or something like, you know, I don't know. But, so anyway, I just wanted to say, I really think it's the interplay of the two of them. And there was a good comment made about the opacity or the visual, the density that we also have to remember, we're in New England, where, you know, in the summertime, it might be well-blocked, but in the winter, it may not be. So how do you balance that?
I just wanted to speak a little bit on the vegetated buffer. Those that listened in or watched the planning board meetings, I was actually pretty vocal in that we need to get a much more definitive definition to our vegetated buffer. And then I put the code enforcement hat back on after the planning board meeting. And we have to create ordinances that are enforceable, that they're not so rigid that it doesn't restrict everything, but has the tools in the toolbox to allow the planning board to do their job and on a case-by-case course, decide what vegetated buffer is sufficient for that project. So the definition that Aaron proposed does just that. It says some specifics, but it says you can do vegetation in a fence, or vegetation in a berm, or maybe all vegetation, or maybe all fence, or maybe all berm, or, or any of the above. So it gets specific enough where it gives developers guidance. It gets specific enough where it gives the planning board guidance, but it doesn't lock anybody into, you have to plant two trees per square foot of eight-foot height that, that grow more than 30 feet in five years, or anything that, that is so restrictive that it, it ties people's hands.
Steve?
I want, I want to stay on what Jamie's saying here. So, you know, I'm listening to this conversation tonight. As, as I listen to it, it's not just about a campground. We have, we, we have a known deficiency that our, our ordinance isn't addressing some of the impacts, the campgrounds. But we spent over a year working on the mineral extraction, all of these same things. Setback, what's the buffer, what's the setback, and such and other. So the underlying questions that I'd, I'd ask everybody to keep in their mind when they're thinking about this tonight is conflicts, right? Where do we have our conflicts in any zoning situation? They tend, they tend to arise at the, at the confluence between two different uses. And we're talking commercial and residential. Mineral extraction, we're talking commercial and residential, right? So there's a commonality there. And what, what, what are we concerned about those quote-unquote conflicts? It's impacts that translate off-site. So you're doing something on this property that you own, as long as you can do that on that property, so the impacts, whatever you're creating, doesn't translate over onto the butter, you've accomplished your mission, right? So it's impacts translating off the site. What are those impacts that we typically are talking about? Noise, visual, and environmental. Noise, visual, and environmental. So when you talk about setbacks and buffers, you're thinking about noise, visual, and environmental. What's sufficient, what's not sufficient? Methods and means. We talked about that extensively at the mineral extraction, and this is why I wanted to hinge off on Jamie's point that he just made. There should be, I would recommend that there's some allowance. You can't be so specific that says you have to plant, "Abervitae's only," certain spacing, certain height, and all this sort of deal. So it's methods and means. We find that when we were discussing the mineral extraction, the business operators are very creative, depending upon their site, the configuration of the site, no different than a campground, depending upon their location, what the topography is and stuff like that. Methods and means allows a level of discretion for the planning board working on the site plan and the business operator to come up with creative means that accomplishes the visual, the noise, and the environmental impacts by methods and means. Some people can do it differently, just based upon the design that they already have or the assets that they have and such and other. So I just, I put that out there. There's these commonalities that I hear between mineral extraction campgrounds and all setbacks and buffer conversations that have been had within the community. So there's, there's the thought process. Thank you.
I'm getting the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that everybody is pretty well-good with 50-foot vegetated, like, to have some sort of in-between. So that, I don't think that's necessarily-
Very, very respectful to all of them.
Whether it's a 50-foot setback or 100-foot, the 50-foot would be vegetated. Okay, all right, that's good. So I'm going to try to keep flowing through something that's similar. So one of the things in the ordinance, the roads and the paths that traverse, okay? And then, so there's that one. And then the setbacks, I notice that some of those ordinances had different setbacks from the water. Are we, A, are we sufficiently covered by shoreland zoning that that is already covered through shoreland zoning? I think you're nodding yes.
Correct.
So we don't need to separate it out. And so the big question is, the roads and paths, I had someone say to me, "Well, what if they put the road right along the property line?" Which wouldn't make sense, because you don't want a road that only has a one-side service. You, it's too expensive to build. Is that considered traversing? Or are you really looking at crossing through as necessary based on the?
Again, so this would be another topic where we're trying to remain flexible. We didn't specifically say it had to be perpendicular, because maybe it's a slanted road in across the property line, but the business does need an access point. So they do need to cross the exterior property line in order to allow campers to enter their site. So yes, it must be able to traverse that area, and it's not necessarily going to be a straight line. We're trying to remain flexible, that they might be allowed to have a path, like a foot path, through that buffer, but then, again, they would need to offset the distance of the path. So if it's six-foot wide path, then now the buffer kind of looks like a fifty-six-foot buffer with a path through the middle. I don't know if this is on your list, Council Hurley.
I have a fairly long one.
But, that's okay. I want to touch on it now, because I think it's relevant, that currently, the campgrounds are allowed as permitted with review in the rural residential and rural mixed-use zones. I heard a few commenters today seem like they were not sure what that meant, or were misrepresenting what that means. Because of the currently proposed minimum lot size of five acres, permitted with review does relate to this, to the reviewing body. It would only be able to be reviewed by the code enforcement office if it was less than one thousand square feet, five hundred square feet. And it would only be allowed to be reviewed by the planning department if it was five thousand square feet. So by default, a campground that has a minimum lot size of five acres is absolutely going to be reviewed by the planning board. If it is, because it's over thirty thousand square, every project that is over thirty thousand square feet gets reviewed by the planning board. So it's not just that it's a permitted use. It is permitted with review, and by default, that will be done by the planning board. So all of these gray areas will be reviewed by the planning board, which is their function in the city, because it's difficult for staff to make gray area decisions. We are meant to interpret the ordinance in a black-and-white fashion, and the ordinance is meant to be written in a flexible fashion so that the planning board can make those difficult decisions.
Can you answer, since you're on this topic? Can you answer the suggestion by some of the speakers here tonight about conditional use as another option, permitted review versus conditional use? Is it similar to what, because of the size?
So our conditional use ordinance, as it stands right now, does list several items that can be, are specifically stated, that the planning board can attach to a conditional use, such as off-site road improvements, hours of operation. And I'll have it in front of me, do we?
There's eight, eight items that are specific to conditional uses. And just for the record, even though permitted with review isn't always listed as a conditional use, the planning board typically has the same discussion, whether it's conditional use or PR. The difference is, if it's listed as a conditional use, the applicant has to directly respond to those items, whereas if it's just a PR, the planning board talks about it, but they don't have to respond ahead of time to those answers. But the planning board takes most items that is currently in our conditional use section under their purview on most reviews. That said, the planning board has requested, in the comprehensive ordinance updates that's gonna come after the comprehensive plan, to be more specific in our conditional uses. As somebody mentioned, we, we do have thirty or forty current categories that require conditional use, and very few of them have specific items to them. Just some of the more recently adopted ordinances, like solar in the rural zones, they have a list of specific stuff. Marijuana has a list of specific stuff, but most of them just fall into the very generic terms. So the planning board has requested that, once we get to the comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance, that we give them more specifics for each individual conditional use separately.
Also, I'll say that as we're currently drafting this ordinance, there's no reason that we would need to draft a second ordinance in the conditional use chapter to regulate the conditional use of campgrounds. We can just make it a line item in this ordinance, and as it's being reviewed by staff and the site planning review committee and the planning board, they would be following all of those line items in the existing, or proposed ordinance.
So you're saying that you think the permitted with review has the strength necessary to basically have the planning board do the full review that some people think is necessary with a conditional?
Correct, I do.
And if the council decides they want more specifics, we could very easily add more specifics to the ordinance without creating that conditional use category. And I just wanted to follow up one, one thing on the question on the access pass and, and it's allowed to traverse the buffer. Just to finish what Erin started, it does also say, if no other feasible alternative exists. So that was put in there, just so the developer couldn't come in and say, I have to have a fifty-foot road around my perimeter. It's if no other feasible alternative exists. Basically, to say, you have to better get into your lot. So basically, what it says is, we have to allow you into the lot, so you have to traverse it to, to get in, but that's pretty much what you're gonna be allowed unless it's a very extenuating circumstance. Thank you.
Or, for instance, if during the site planning review committee, emergency personnel, like the fire department, decides that a second entrance is needed, then that would be added as well.
All right.
So on, I'm gonna review, so the setbacks from the water seem like they're covered with shoreland. Anybody have any concerns on that one? The conditional use versus permitted review, is everybody comfortable that the permitted with review gives it enough meat? Okay. And the other one was the roads and the pathways. Are you happy with the fact that it has? Okay, so Jonathan, you have some.
So the feasible alter, the if no feasible alternative exists, kind of, I want to make sure we're allowing enough access. You know, you mentioned one road in. I, I would think, just for safety purposes, you'd probably want some other access road. And then there's paths that you would need potentially to go down to the water, maybe to go across the street, if there's like, depending on the setup. So I don't want to overly limit potential footpaths and exits. So I just want to make sure that this language is maybe fully appropriate for what we're trying to do.
So for instance, the shoreline zone says that any lot is allowed a six-foot wide, up to a six-foot wide meandering path to the water. So if the ordinance says they're allowed up to a six-foot wide meandering, that's specific, so it's not a straight-line path to prevent erosion from, from gain and speed. So it, it kind of meanders, so that meandering path will, will allow the vegetation buffer to remain, because you're kind of working in-between tree trunks. It's not meant to be a well-defined path. It's meant to give access to the water. So yes, there's other provisions of the ordinance, like fire department. Yes, a lot of times, we require a second means of access. Sometimes we might require three. If somebody comes in with a four-hundred-site campground, we, we might require more than two. And, and if it's a, if it's a thousand-foot road to get in there, then, then, yes, all of those would fall under the if there's no other reasonable alternative. All of those are reviewed on every project that comes through the planning department.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good. So I think it's the last thing on the setbacks. The store-office exception, does the pool get included in the exception based on your sketch? It seems to be.
It does. That was specifically shown in the graphic on purpose, because that was a topic of discussion during zoning subcommittee. We have not, we, we've defined what a campground site is, and the setback is for the first campground site. So any recreational amenities are allowed within the seventy-five-foot setback, still providing for the fifty-foot vegetated buffer.
So it's basically a fifty-foot setback, potentially?
For, right.
Just those things, right?
For the office, store, a pool, a playground, picnic tables.
I know, I'm thinking of the noisier elements of, potentially noisier elements of a campground.
And I really think that's an item that we would need to clarify in the ordinance through these discussions, because the ordinance currently is fairly specific. So I, I think, as, again, I'm gonna pull off my planning hat, pull on my code enforcement hat. As code enforcement, I would want more clarity in that section, that exactly what are we allowing within that less-than-seventy-five-foot.
That exception.
Okay, so that would go back to zoning to, to clarify that.
So yes, I don't know if any councillors have any comments, if it's gonna go back to zoning. Oh, Steve has a comment. Sorry, Steve.
Always go back to the noise, visual, and environmental.
Yep.
So I'm confused, you get a fifty-foot buffer. That addresses visual and noise, right? Environmental to an extent. And then if you put an additional buffer of, let's say, there's another hundred, hundred feet beyond that, what is that addressing? It's not addressing visual. Most of the topography's there.
Well, it wouldn't be another hundred feet, it's just another fifty, twenty-five to fifty, right?
What's it addressing for you?
I know.
Not visual. Noise is gonna cover that fifty-foot or a hundred-foot open space, right? It's gone, right? It's not, right? It's not addressing anything. And environmental, yeah, I don't know. So I just, when, when you're splitting the hairs between a hundred-foot setback, two-hundred-foot setback, what, the fifty-foot buffer vegetated appropriately, or by methods of means, if somebody puts a fence up and such and other, that gets into the visual, the noise. Environmental is, is separate, but.
Okay. Okay, so are there any, anything more to add on the, the pool, the pool and office exceptions? Does anybody have any?
And just to be clear, it's not a exception. The office just falls under our typical, because it's not a campsite.
Right.
So it's not an exception, it's just the typical setbacks.
We've only defined one thing that is not allowed. To list all the things that are allowed would not be.
Okay.
Recommended.
Okay. So in other words, if there was a single-family house there and they had a pool, that's what you're, that's what you're saying, is the pool?
A single-family house is allowed to be within fifteen feet.
I know.
Of their exterior boundary of their parcel. In this, in the two zones that we're currently discussing.
May I just clarify Steve's comment? So Steve, are you saying that you don't feel there would be a need to further restrict use of that twenty-five, in our example, of fifty-foot vegetative and seventy-five-foot setback? You don't need to further restrict the use of that twenty-five-foot zone, because we've already addressed the issue with the fifty-foot buffer? Am I understanding you correctly?
What I'm suggesting is, because we get the, the task of taking all of these moving inputs and creating something that, that's acceptable at the end product, is as you're talking, the difference between the fifty-foot buffer plus some additional setback, what does that additional setback accomplish for you? So I'm back to the visual, the noise, and the environmental, is the three major things that we always look at as far as setbacks and, and buffers and whatnot. So I'm not suggesting one way or the other. I'm giving you a thought process to, to think about.
So the fifty-foot buffer is, we're all in agreement, a hundred percent, fifty-foot buffer. We are leaning towards another fifty-foot added to that for a setback. The recommendation is an added twenty-five feet for a setback. Right? And I hear what you're saying. I, I do hear what you're saying.
And you still?
No, I, so I hear Steve, but I think, when I think about that question, and I think we had a, a public comment in regards to it, in terms of what, what problems are we trying to address? If we are trying to minimize that impact between commercial and residential, to accomplish that, and we think a seventy-five-foot setback will help accomplish that, I almost feel like we have to restrict activity within that seventy-five feet. In the sense of not being at seventy-five feet to a campsite, but seventy-five feet to, I don't know how you say it, active use. Like, you know, you don't want a volleyball. So if we're really trying to create that additional buffer and address concern, then I think you'd have to limit use of that space, or not. And then, then maybe we're at fifty feet. I guess this is kind of what I'm mulling about. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I keep going back to the fact that the likelihood is, why would you put the pool on the extreme end of a campground? Why would you put the office on the extreme end, unless it's at the road?
Could also be the, could be the septic system as well. Just not necessarily a recreational amenity.
Septic system, right.
Right. We've only listed one thing that can't be there. So could be the septic system, it could be just the layout. I drive past the campground every day on my way to and from work, and the pool is the first thing, because it's attached to the office, because they need bathrooms.
Right, but it's near a road mostly?
Correct. It's about twenty feet off the road.
Right. So, you know, I'm thinking of some of the campgrounds, I'm thinking, would you put your pool way at the edge of your property, not like, near, near other people's homes? Or is it, is it, doesn't, it doesn't make sense? You want it near other stuff?
Well, I can think of one instance where it made sense. It's hard to regulate those things.
All right.
Pete?
Yes.
So the fifty-foot buffer that we all agree vegetated, that will help lessen the sounds and all that. I still don't understand that we have to have twenty-five more feet, all right? So that, because that's a lot of landmass around there. When we require a buffer for both parties, right? So the fifteen feet on the other side as well of wherever this is, right? Residential doesn't have fifteen-foot buffer for building? Yeah, fifteen. So now, if you got the fifty from the, from these, all these campgrounds, and you got fifteen, so you're at sixty-five feet for the lessening of the sounds, unless you clearcut your land right to your property line, I would think that this is, this is what this is for. So I'm, I'm still set on fifty, so.
The fifteen foot on the abutter property lines is a setback, not a buffer?
Not a buffer, so that you can clear right up to it, and it wouldn't have anything to do with noise? Okay. All right.
Nate?
I, I do see your point, though, Pete. I know what you're starting to say.
Nate, and then Jonathan.
So, so I'm hearing Steve talk about the, you know, visual, sound, environmental, and I, I can, guess I can understand where it's like, you have your fifty-foot buffer, and then the land after that, what is that serving, that issue? Is it potential compromise at this point to increase the vegetated buffer to like seventy-five? Yeah, and that, again, part of my thought, my process is that, is that, again, it's, I think it's gonna be hard to legislate vegetated buffer, but like, maybe it's something for the zoning to consider, is that, you know, if, if we're worried about these setbacks, the, the intention of these setbacks is to prevent sound and, you know, visual issues as best as you can, but, you know, we don't have that set, if we don't want to do a setback beyond the vegetated buffer, do you increase vegetated buffer? I understand it's expensive, too, that, but again, it's just an idea, because it solves, it would solve that issue of like, well, what's the blank space gonna do? Something to think about.
No, Nate was next. I mean, Jonathan was next.
Gonna get my name wrong again. So some, similar thoughts. I appreciate Steve's input. And, yeah, I mean, the vegetated buffer is intending to do the heavy lifting of, you know, screening, visual, hopefully blocking out most of the noise, whatever that looks like. And the extra twenty-five feet really isn't buying you anything if the vegetated buffer, which I think needs to be better defined, is doing its job. So personally, I think just having that fifty-foot vegetative buffer and figuring out what looks reasonable for that makes sense to me, instead of adding some arbitrary additional no-man's-land where they can't do anything with it.
In all honesty, I'm not convinced fifty feet takes care of it. So, I mean, I hear what Steve's saying, but I hear pep in every morning. So, and they're probably three hundred feet away from me.
I can hear them across town, so that's not, that's not gonna make that much difference.
So. Pete?
So also, with that fifty-foot, whatever you want to call it, it's a buffer, we could also require a fence, and that would also deaden it. I know others that have done their whole sites with fencing. So if you put that to the buffer as well, then, then we're getting it, and we're not taking land from a said, said person that they can't use, a company. So that's where I'm, I'm really stuck.
I'm probably not in favor of putting a fence, especially if something is out, you know, in the country. To me, a fence is, takes away from being out camping, you know? But a buffer adds nature to what's going on. I also think seventy-five to a hundred feet is a reasonable distance, especially when the huge list that we just looked at, the majority of them were two-hundred feet. So.
I think we're being reasonable.
I think we're being very reasonable, even at a hundred. You know, when they had, it was like ten or more places on that list had two-hundred feet. Yes, Ann?
Well, I, if we're not restricting use, recreational use, or other uses of that space between, you know, between the vegetated buffer and the setback, I'd be more inclined to go with a hundred feet.
Okay.
Just, and the issue that I think that's addressing is. Just, and the, the issue that I think that's addressing is additional separation, less visibility, maybe slightly less noise. I mean, noise carries, right? So to Jonathan's point, noise carries, but I, I do think that might help accomplish, reducing some of that conflict a little bit. And then I was just going to ask, it'd be interesting at zoning, if there are operators there to, I mean, it's an interesting question to me, like, could there be, if a fence is up, that's probably crazy from a code enforcement standpoint, like, if a fence is put in place, do you shift your boundary because it creates a better visual? If our primary issue is the visibility, would, would there be operators that would put a fence up in, in spite of the cost in order to have additional square footage? I mean, that would be interesting. Or does that create a lot of complications? I don't know if that's a zoning level conversation.
I can, I can, excuse me, I can speak a little bit about Hootopia. So during that review, the abutters came in, they were concerned. So Hootopia agreed to put up a fence, and they didn't put up a fence that was obtusive. They actually did a bamboo fence, which does zero for sound, because it's literally a quarter of an inch thick. But it did provide a visual buffer, it did tell the, the occupants of the campground, this is where the property line is, don't, don't weave your way through the fence. It, it, it was a solution that both the abutters and Hootopia said, yeah, we can make this work. So again, that goes back to our definition of vegetative buffer. It allows the option of a fence. That way, if both sides agree that a, a fence might help that, that buffer, they can install a fence in lieu of a couple of trees type of thing.
Okay, we've kind of got to push this along. We've got three smaller areas.
Three much smaller. Okay, acreage, you recommend five acres. I can't imagine putting a campground on just five acres. Why was ten acres not recommended? Is it just?
I think that is an attempt to be business friendly. If someone wants to make a campground with five acres, why would we limit them?
Okay. Anybody have any comment on that one?
When you take into account the seventy-five-foot setback?
Well, if you put seventy-five-foot setback on five acres, what are you going to get for a campground?
Correct, not very many sites.
Five acres is very small for a campground. I'd like to go a fifty-foot setback.
Yeah, but do, do you mind leaving that as the minimum?
Yeah. So I think, I think five acres is small.
I can't see someone doing it, but is it?
Yeah, I think ten, ten acres.
How about eight acres? How about six and a half?
No.
Well, then why limit it?
So I, I think the minimum is probably fine, because it would be hard to do, but, yeah, it's unlikely it's going to happen, so.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be nothing to build.
That's what the planning board said. The planning board said that if we say five, that means you might only get ten or twenty sites on it. And if somebody wants to invest a million dollars for ten sites, who are they to say you can't do that?
Right. So seasonality, you have April fifteenth to November first. My only question was, does that mirror the RV limits? Because I think we should.
That is where they got that from.
Okay, so I'm. Anybody else have a problem with the?
We already agreed about the RV stuff.
It mirrors the RV limits. Yes.
So a few of the comments from the public were around these dates. We do have language in here around residency for campers. So personally, if somebody wants to put a, you know, a camper that's winter-appropriate on their site, so that they can have people that want to go snowshoeing or ice fishing, I don't really have a problem with it, so. I'm okay with getting rid of this if it's, if we have the residency clause in here, so, thank you.
More?
If the fire department was reviewing us a property, and how would they look at it differently if it's going to be year-round versus seasonal?
There's a number of different departments that would look at it differently. The fire department would require the access points to be maintained throughout all weather conditions. The public works department would require sufficient snow storage areas. Probably the water department would have some comments about different connections.
So probably no.
An item that we reflected from the RV ordinance. And I think that there would be some provisions that would be needed to be added to the actual structures. It may not be an RV park in that instance, it might be a year-round cabin that is fully winterized, and we are not currently restricting that from happening, aside from the seasonality clause.
Anne?
So I think that leads us to the concern about creating permanent residencies and kind of a loophole of developing a small site for commercial living, right? Like, that was one of the concerns about looking at the campground.
With inadequate.
Ordinances with inadequate, like, resources, and also, yeah, it's, it's a little bit different then. And I, you know, as somebody who really kind of, not kind of, but, you know, I advocated or questioned our limitation on the use of RVs in light of our unhoused population, and that that was a solution during the winter, so I was kind of pushing to, like, could we extend it further? And there was a lot of discussion about safety concerns, about inspection needs. It really opened up additional concerns and staff-level effort to make sure that RVs that were open year-round were safe. And so I don't know how that would be different in this scenario, unless we set it to be, you know, structures versus, it can be RVs or tent sites, you know, but, and I have tented in the middle of winter, not in Maine, but in other places. So I mean, you can also tent in the winter, but to me, again, that feels like a safety.
I have to stop the meeting right now. We need to take a vote. Because at nine-thirty, we have to stop. But we have some things in order for the city to function, we have to vote. So this discussion has to stop. We can finish the rest, try to get through the rest of this, or by nine-thirty, we will not be able to go back to this. We have to get to this agenda. So if people would like to take, I would propose that we just push on and we finish everything that we can tonight. But we need a unanimous vote, and we would probably go till quarter to ten. So probably go at least a half hour. So, but I would like to just finish this. I'd like to go back to this, but we need to get the other stuff done.
Actually, I think we have enough to meet, if zoning can meet next week, I think we have enough information for zoning to meet. It's Jonathan, Bob, and I, and we have differing, different opinions.
We can't even discuss that more.
Yeah, I know.
We have to get to the rest of this agenda.
I know, that's why I'm going to say, I think we're done this.
Either we vote on this, we need to vote to extend it, or we need to rush through the rest of this. Bob?
I'll move that we extend the meeting till ten o'clock.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That was unanimous. We're ready to keep going.
But in order to get the regular business done, I think we move through the other ones and then we discuss.
And then if we have time to come back? Okay.
Is that okay?
So we're going to move on to the rest, and if we have time, we'll come back to the rest of this. We only have two more things we're going to discuss on here anyway.
Okay, got it.
All right, so the next one, in order to change the dates of the November city council meeting and subcommittee to accommodate election day, which falls on the regular scheduled first Tuesday of the month, dates will be changed to the following. Regular city council meeting will be held on November twelfth, and the twenty-six subcommittees will meet. They will be held the nineteenth, twentieth. May I have a motion? Nate, uh, yeah, Nate?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Anne?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to accept the bid for the concrete sidewalk demolition and construction services from Jenga, did I get that right? Excavation, she just likes to laugh at me. With pine tree heli, wait, wait a minute, I'm getting off the, contractors of.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anne?
I'll second that.
We reviewed this at property subcommittee.
Yeah. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you did a great job, Matt, we really appreciate it. In order to approve and authorize the city manager to sign amendment one to the operating rights agreement with Pine Tree Helicopters at the Sanford Sea Coast Regional Airport. May I have a motion, please? Nate?
Motion, motion to approve.
A second? Pete?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Yes, Anne?
I, I just wanted to mention, I know Allison is back with us, but I just wanted to mention, there was conversation with the subcommittee about how well the business is going, they're expanding encouragement for folks who haven't been in a helicopter to try it out, but.
Three thousand rides they did at the.
Friburk Fair, yeah. So it's a really exciting addition to our community.
Excellent, thank you. All those, any other discussion?
Uh, just quick summary as to what the changes are.
So it was, it was, did you not have a chance to read it? It was in the packet?
I didn't get a chance to read it.
I can provide a quick summary if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure thing. One extra bragging point, too, though, on top of what Councilor Hanselman said. Remember Ace Camp? So Parker Montano, who owns this, went to Maine Ace Camp fourteen years ago. And he now owns aviation business at an airport. So I thought that was really cool. I learned that also.
That is nice.
Yep, so these changes, two- and four-place light piston-powered helicopters used to be specified in there as what he could use in continuance of his business, that's changed just to rotorcraft. So we're not going to limit him on how many seats he can have, on what, what his dream is of the type of aircraft he can use. It also allows him to do more helicopter-related services. So these are things like helicopter utility work. CMP recently opened up their bids, and he was able to do some work for them, so that allows him to do that based out of Sanford. And then the other thing was that the agreement was for an initial term, and then he had an extension to, or an option, excuse me, to extend for an additional five years, and he has exercised that option. The extra five years, the percentage of gross revenue wasn't specified. So the change specifies, and it doubles the amount that he pays the airport every year. So it went from a cap of a thousand dollars to a cap of two thousand dollars per year to be able to, and that helps us cover the costs of plowing and all that good stuff.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Done deal, there you go, Allison. Oh, you got the next one. In order to approve changes to the ordinance, chapter seventy, the airport article, five, four. For rates for fees. This must be written two separate occasions. This is the first. Does anyone have any questions of this? She already presented. No? Okay, so then we'll put this on for the second reading. All right, thank you.
I'll be back.
In order to approve the closure of Shaw's Road from Spur Road to Shaw's Ridge Road for the Sanford Soccer Fall Festival on October twenty-sixth and October twenty-seventh, from seven AM to five PM daily. Do I have a motion, please? Anne?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Nate?
I'll second.
All those in, well, first, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Another crazy weekend at Shawfield.
Yeah, it will be. In order to appoint, so this is why we really had to keep going.
Yeah.
Sue Cody as warden for the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four municipal and state elections. Do I have a motion, please? Pete?
I motion to appoint Susan Cody as warden for November fifth.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Yes.
I'll second that.
Jonathan, okay, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. In order to authorize the city managers to exempt grant funds in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five from the Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation to fund the purchase of fifty-five escape system bailout kits. All right.
Motion to approve.
They got a motion, a second, Anne?
I'll second that.
I still like to hear it.
Yeah.
But I like to keep things moving.
And, Madam Mayor, I thought we were going to see video of Jordan jumping out of a building, but I never saw that on social media.
I have still photos. I'll, I'll get through this quick, because I know, I know there's still a lot of things to go, but just a, a little background, two thousand and nineteen, I was sent to Indianapolis to become a RIT instructor. Some of you have been to our training before and seen the operations. Our department is completely RIT-trained. And what that is, is techniques in self-rescue, and also going in and rescuing trapped firefighters in a building. This is the last piece of my puzzle that I've been dreaming about for five years. You can see, these units are between five and six hundred dollars a piece. So getting that big lump sum to outfit everybody with this, with this kit that goes into their side bellows pocket, and it's a hook they can hook on and bail out of a second-floor window. We talked about the smoke, the rapidly changing fire environment, that is a reality in our business. We just didn't have a means to escape other than cross our fingers and jump. So this was one of the first things that I did after my promotion, was to put in for this grant, and we were successful. So now that will give everybody the ability to have one of these personally assigned to them. We ordered four of remaining grant funds, which allowed Jordan to be one of the first, one of the first people to use these kits at the Notre Dame training site. So they're, they're an essential safety device for our members if things go wrong inside a burning building. And it happens there, Charlotte, North Carolina just had one today, so. That's why I felt it was important. This has been a dream of mine to get these, and hopefully we can get them.
Well, thank you. And thanks the Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation. Wow, that's fantastic.
Several, several items from them over the, over the past several years. So, and they've, they've come through again and awarded us this grant, so we're very thankful for them.
Fantastic. All right, so we've had a first and a second. Out, do you have a question?
Uh, just a comment. That's great news, and thank you for applying for that grant. And they do have pretty good subs, so.
I've, I've loved it.
If you've ever tried them, there's one.
I wish they'd move in town, honestly.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Oh, Pete is left.
He would be.
He'll be back. We can ask him when he comes. Okay, and this, you might want to pull out your resolution. An, an order of the city council resolution seeking amended amendment of the state licensed hypodermic apparatus exchange program, syringe service program, in parentheses, law titled twenty-two sections, one, three, four, one, or amended by rule to eliminate the one-to-a-hundred distribution of needles and return to the one-to-one exchange program in recognition of the public health hazard stemming from inappropriate discarded contaminated syringes. And I told you guys at the beginning that, you know, about the meeting that we had with Gordon Smith, and that's, I told you to pay attention to the follow-up that Steve's going to do. This is probably what got the, the governor's office interested, because they got a copy of this and wanted to talk to us. So Steve did a great job, and I'm going to turn this over to Steve to share this document with us.
Well, I think the easiest way to, to share this is to simply go through the resolution and read it out loud. So this is in direct response to observations. So I would, I would note before reading the resolution, there was a state law that, that sets forth the syringe service program. There's the intent of the law. All of the details of the law are set forward by rulemaking by the CDC under chapter two fifty-two. So you have the intent, you have the law that allows for the rulemaking to take place. The rulemaking sets the, the, how these syringe service programs will be set forth. Then you've got an implementation line. So picture this, so now there, it's implemented. And we have, on our side of the equation, direct observation of the impacts. That's the difference between what the intent was, what the rules implementing those are versus what we see the end product at the end of the day. So we've met, and it's an important note, we have met on multiple, multiple occasions with the CDC to address, to have our concerns addressed, and to, we've come, not, not been able to come to a resolve. So the resolution is written in response to that. It states, whereas the city of Sanford acknowledges there is a public health crisis that is the result of inappropriately discarded hypodermic syringes on public and private property as exacerbated by the operation of the state-licensed syringe service programs. And whereas the presence of contaminated hypodermic syringes scattered across public parks, playgrounds, sidewalks, storm drains, trails, and private properties has and continues to expose all Maine adults and children to viral and bacterial infections caused by needle sticks and exposures. And whereas the city of Sanford correlates the operation of state-licensed harm reduction programs to address bloodborne pathogens, exposures to consumers who inject drugs, the volume of syringes distributed, and the presence of discarded contaminated syringes pursuant to this program is creating a public health hazard for all people caused by this exposure. And whereas state law pursuant to title twenty-two, section thirteen forty-one provides for the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the Maine CDC, to establish hypodermic apparatus exchange programs, herein known as syringe service programs, to ensure greater protection of health and safety of consumers who inject drugs by governing programs that will offer new syringes, education on disposal of used syringes, resources for treatment, and help prevent human immunodeficiencies virus, HIV, and bloodborne pathogens. and bloodborne pathogens caused by syringe reuse. And whereas in early twenty-twenty, the Maine CDC licensed syringe service programs to operate in the City of Sanford licensed to main access points without prior consultation or notice to the city. They tend to seem to be contesting that, but we still stand by our course that without prior consultation or notice to the city until after the entity was licensed. Whereas the syringe service programs was licensed in twenty-twenty, provided for a one-to-one exchange of hypodermic apparatus syringes to consumers who inject drugs. And whereas the city observed an immediate and correlated increase in the number of inappropriately discarded syringes throughout the city upon the start of operation of the syringe service program. And whereas the city met with and consulted the Maine CDC upon first observation of the increased presence of discarded syringes throughout the city and resulting efforts of collection did not reduce discarded syringes. And whereas during COVID in twenty-twenty-two, the Maine CDC through emergency rulemaking pursuant to title five, section eight thousand fifty-four, enacted an amendment to syringe service programs to eliminate the requirement of the one-to-one exchange and provided for a one-to-one-plus program allowing for a limit of one hundred syringes when a consumer does not have a used syringe or equivalent number of syringes to exchange to become effective as of September first of twenty-twenty-two. And whereas the Maine CDC further adopted by routine technical rule the provisions of the emergency rule providing for the continuation of the one-to-one-plus program or one hundred needles per encounter per consumer effective November twenty-second, uh, November of twenty-twenty-two. Whereas the city continued to see significant increases in inappropriately discarded syringes in its parks, trails, parking lots, encampment areas, sidewalks, and waterways upon the amendment of the syringe service programs to the one-to-one-plus as excessive numbers were distributed, not collected by exchange, and subsequently inappropriately discarded. Whereas the city addressed the Maine CDC and the syringe service programs two additional times to identify a commonly accepted solution to lessen the discarded syringes without resolve. And whereas the state legislative report titled Syringe Service Programs in Maine in your report, federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which was issued this May of twenty-twenty-four, served to confirm that. Maine CDC has licensed thirteen certified syringe service, uh, providers, uh, programs to operate in Maine. In twenty-twenty-three, those programs distributed three million six hundred and seventy-six thousand syringes. In twenty-twenty-three, they collected three million one hundred and fifty-eight thousand syringes. So the uncollected syringes were five hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-three statewide. Further, in Sanford, the Maine CDC licensed main access points distributed four hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and twenty syringes in that year. They collected four hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight that were uncollected. So that's nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-two syringes that were not collected and were left to be, uh, discarded inappropriately. Whereas the City of Sanford performed a closure of an encampment adjacent to the location of the syringe service programs' first location off Heritage Crossing and documented the collection of fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen syringes by volume. Further documented the inappropriately discarded volume of syringes and public health hazard. And whereas the Maine CDC strictly adheres to the mission of, uh, syringe service providers, providing syringes for the purpose of addressing the public health hazard of consumers who inject drugs, exposure to immunodeficiency virus, and other bloodborne pathogens caused by syringe reuse. And whereas the City of Sanford has been unable to obtain recognition by the Maine CDC to address through program amendment the public health hazard that has been created by the vast number of inappropriately discarded contaminated hypodermic syringes stemming from the syringe service programs, heightened by the rulemaking amending the syringe service programs to a one-to-one-plus being one-to-one-hundred exchange, a non-exchange. Whereas the Maine CDC has indicated that the city could petition the CDC to reexamine the programs through rulemaking to address the observed public health hazard of inappropriately discarded needles. And whereas the city has recognized the need to communicate to state legislators the need to amend the state law, title twenty-two, section thirteen forty-one, hypodermic apparatus exchange programs to address the unrecognized public health hazard that is the widespread discarding of contaminated syringes on public and private properties exposing all people, especially those who are not consumers who inject drugs, to bloodborne pathogens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sanford City Council hereby declares that the Maine CDC needs to amend the syringe service program uh, pursuant to ten dash one forty-four Code of Main Rules, chapter two fifty-two, to discontinue the one-to-one-plus or one-to-one-hundred syringe distribution program allowance and return to a strict one-to-one exchange program to facilitate the com, the complete collection of syringes and prevent discarded needle exposures to the public. And be it further resolved that the Sanford City Council shall seek state legislative support to amend title twenty-two, section thirteen forty-one, hypodermic apparatus exchange programs to, at a minimum, restore a strict one-to-one syringe exchange program to lessen the public health crisis that has been aggravated by the syringe service programs liberal distribution versus collections program that currently accounts for over five hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-three unaccounted syringes across our state as evidenced and observed. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We're actually, uh, going to be signing, um, this now. Should we, is this something we need to take a vote on?
Yes.
Okay. So can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolve, this resolution.
May I have a second? Pete?
I'd like to second that.
All those in favor?
Hold on. Discussion, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, Steve, I appreciate all the hard work you put into this. Um, I do feel that it doesn't really have any bite. Um, I would like to amend this to add some language around the city adopting ordinances or other legal means to, um, either remove main access points or, um, enforce a one-to-one ratio at a local level.
That is going to be our next step. This was the first step to, um, send to, like, Gordon Smith and the governor and the legislator, letting them know we are serious. And then our next step will be, that's why we met with Gordon Smith, to let him know what our next step is going to be. And that's exactly what our next step is going to be. Go ahead.
So I feel like we've kind of already gone over this and this isn't really helping. So I think this will largely be ignored.
Say that again.
I think that the current language in this, it will largely be ignored because of, at least what I've heard from the discussions, they have no plans to make any changes in Augusta. And any legislative changes would be at least a year out.
Pete?
So during the meeting, uh, yesterday, um, I had the same feeling. I'm tired of being lied to, no accountability. And, uh, Gordon Smith, uh, explained to me that this was the fastest way to get anything done. And I have no problem removing main, main safe access from, from our city. I would rather have it go to, uh, the hospitals like, like Augusta does. And they handed out half the amount of needles with the same amount of population. Um, so you are correct on your assumption on safe access. Um, however, this is the fastest route. We actually had somebody from Janet Mills' office, that the number-two person to her. Um, and this is the direct access to get something done. If they do nothing, then yeah, we, we have the ability to vote this out and get it out of here. That'll cause a lot of overdoses and a lot of problems. So this is the safest route we can go right now.
Pete, would you say that in that meeting yesterday, we essentially told him, this is our first step? Um, I don't think we need to put in there that we're going to write an ordinance. I think it's very, you need to be cautious because whatever you write, if you don't follow through, you get an egg on your face.
Yeah.
So this is the first step. But we were clear with him verbally that we had a vote. We probably would get a seven-to-zero vote to go back to a one-to-one here in our community, at the very least. We, we basically told him that.
We have the one-to-one.
I know I said it.
Yeah, he, he understood that. And he also understood that we had the power to vote it out if there's no action from the state, which I, I appreciated him telling us. We had a lot of use, a lot of useful information, uh, yesterday all around. Um, and I've been working on this for two years, only two, because I'm new. Um, but this seems to be the route that I would recommend to go. Is to, let's see if the Mills administration is going to stand up. This is the fastest way to make a difference. Um, instead of a year, you know, um, going through legislation, getting voted on. You know how long that takes? Um, we might have to do an emergency session. This is the fastest way to make a difference immediately in our city. So I'm in favor of this.
Which is what we did speak about, Jonathan, was doing an emergency, um, executive decision, you know, so that we could stop it.
Yeah.
Because if we don't get, if they're not going to be looking at this and taking us seriously. I mean, we'd like to work peacefully, you know, with the state.
Get state action.
And get state action so that it's more, we're concerned about it would then affect our borders. So we just don't want to just do it here. We would like it so that it's nowhere near us. It stops in the state of Maine. And that's why we're trying to work it through nicely at first. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah, I understand the speak softly but carry a stick. Um, but what's the timeline for that? Are we waiting till the next meeting? Are we waiting three months, six months?
It didn't seem like, they want us to wait very long. It seemed, he, he was actually encouraging us. If you wait for the legislature, it's going to take a year. You want to do something now. So we're looking at very soon. So we'll, we'll send it up. We'll get, we'll, they're going to give us a response and then we'll act. And so they, they have a, uh, it seemed like it was quick, like they're not supposed to take too long. But what they're going to do is they're going to write a response. They will give it to him, Gordon, and then he will review it and then it'll come to us.
Did they give you a timeline for that response?
So Maine CDC is in the process of crafting a response to this resolution now.
Because they've already seen it.
I believe what's going to be in that response is why they believe so strongly that going back to a one-to-one is harmful to achieving their mission of the bloodborne pathogens. That's my expectation. So that, let me, let me carry my thoughts. I'm getting scrambled here now. So, uh, that, that being said, there was common recognition in our dialogue yesterday that the Maine CDC, if you petition them to change through rulemaking, they're not going to change through rulemaking to make significant amendments to the program design that's going to address our concern. Thus, the communication to the legislature, hey, remove that allowance in the law, which is open-ended at this point in time and allows the CDC, through rulemaking, to put forward the regulations of the program. Occupy that space, remove that ability so they can't do that anymore, is one of the major considerations. So we'll see what their response is because as I've had multiple dialogues with them, the CDC continues to purport that it's harmful to go to a limited number. A one-to-one exchange is harmful to their program as far as bloodborne pathogens. What I fail to get for recognition is that we have concerns. They may recognize that, but they, they won't address it through amendments to the program that we have concerns about the inappropriately discarded needles being a harmful impact in our community. That being said, the other, uh, con, uh, concurrence that we sort of wrapped up on yesterday, uh, with Gordon Smith was that, again, intent and implementation, observed impacts, right? You started with a good intent. Here's the observed impacts that can't be denied. We have an issue for exposure here that can't be denied. What amendments should be made to the program that, that allows for harm reduction programming to be out there? I say that it needs to be a greater emphasis on, um, the aspects of the diversionary programs, the treatment programs, and the cessation of injecting illegal drugs, which the focus seems to be, we're going to give you clean needles so as you're injecting illegal drugs, you won't get bloodborne pathogens or be less likely to spread those. So it's amendments to the current program. How do you get that? Common concurrent, CDC is not going to do that for us, right? You're back to the state legislature. The other part that I want, want to make for you is if you, if you only address it singularly here in Sanford, and I'm suggesting that you, you should take further actions beyond tonight, uh, here locally, that simply booting main access points out or, or restoring one-to-one here in Sanford only, they could move out of Sanford, set up on the Alfred of Eleven and Lime, and all that same volume of needles is going to flow back into our community. So I referenced from my notes from two thousand and seventeen when they were coming here by vehicle and distributing needles before they were licensed to operate here. Right? So again, I go back to direct observation. I have an engineering background, direct observation. What are we seeing? The programs have been implemented. What are we seeing on the backside of that? And I think that's where the rubber hasn't met the road yet. The state, everybody involved, needs to go back and reexamine the program. When we read that twenty, the, the, the last report there, that they're mandated to report those numbers and they're supposed to get those numbers out again this November. We'll see the new numbers as to what those are going to look like. Um, is the program actually accomplishing what it set out to do? And is it going to be able to address our concerns with the public health exposure that the rest of us are up against? So there's eighty-five hundred participants in the twenty-twenty-three data in there and you've got a million four Maine residents that stand to be exposed. Where's the balance in that? That's what we're asking for consideration, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah, just a comment. Um, thank you, Steve. Um, I guess my point is that, you know, in your discussion with them, they said they're unlikely to change their ruling. I'm, I'm okay with sending this, but I, I think we needed to have a parallel path.
And the, what I'm going to do tomorrow is I'm meeting with all the other mayors and I'm taking this and I'm going to send it to them. Because they want, they're looking at Portland and they're looking at us because Mark Deon in Portland is also, had met last week with Gordon. And he's following the same path we're following. And then all the other mayors who belong to it are just saying they're going to back what we're going to do. So then, so it would be more than just Portland, Sanford. We'll have multiple cities saying, we're done with this. So then we'll have the support, hopefully, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
I'd still like to see some kind of timeframe around when we decide to take action after they maybe don't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ann?
Well, I was just going to say what I am hearing and, and, um, I appreciate Councilor Martell's concerns, um, is that we do have a parallel plan. We do have a plan in place. This is step one. And then we'll take further action as needed. And I, I think that sense of urgency is felt by all of us, right? I don't, I don't think any of us want to drag this out for six months or a year. So to me, I feel good about this because I think it is, I'm hearing from folks that are communicating with Augusta that this is step one. And then we do step two when we're ready to do that already. So I feel like this is the momentum gathering.
Yeah. Bob, did you have a question or a comment?
Well, I, I guess as, as I'm sitting here listening to things, I, I think it's been said, um, and Pete, if I can call on you, um, a dozen to maybe twenty people may pass away if we suddenly yank, uh, needles. In other words, if we, if we were to vote tonight and the needle program, so it ended tonight, which is not on the drawing board, there's a potential that people could die because of that decision.
That is a hundred percent correct. And so we got to find that balance.
And, and I think that's what we're doing here. We're, we're buying a little time. We're also, to those that hear it, sending the message that this is on, this is a potential. Uh, so, uh, I, I think we need to stay the course here, uh, and, uh, and, and go ahead. And I think if the timeline gets too lengthy, any counselor can make a motion to, uh, speed this process up and, and see where it goes. So if, if you're not happy, next meeting, you know, or you can ask for it to be on the agenda or whether it might be. But I think, take one step, make sure, uh, you know, But I think, take one step, make sure, uh, you know, we, we, uh, treat this with, uh, yeah, all the, all the, the different populations in mind here. Um, and I think you said this, Pete, I'll echo it, that, you know, we don't wanna be, uh, hearing or reading a paper that all of a sudden we have, uh, people dying in our community, uh, because of actions that we took, so.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Are you ready to vote on this? We had the first, second, now we have to vote. Do you all sit with questions? Do you need anything else? Okay. All right. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Now we can go back to what are the other two things under the, um, ordinance that we need to talk about for the camps?
Um, I think we, let's see, the seasonality we were addressing. So we were addressing the seasonality is the last thing we were discussing. And then the la- and the final thing I had was the, there was a mention of not allowing it in the RMU, but only in the RR or vice versa, so. But it's already allowed in the RR and the RMU, correct? Permitted with?
There were no changes proposed to the land use table. So it's currently permitted with review in the RR and RMU zones.
Okay. So, um, I don't know if anybody has any feelings on the zones or the seasonality.
Well, I, um, recall Aaron's conversation about this when we first started the conversation about it, that the RM and RR zones are actually the place you would have campgrounds, right? Like, we actually don't want them in our urban zones. That wouldn't make any sense. So, um, I respect that residents don't want them next to them perhaps, but from an overall standpoint of where campgrounds would exist, it does make sense to have them in those zones.
And one of the reasons we look at setbacks is when there is a difference of use, we try to help provide buffers from the change of use.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, I, I don't know if anybody else has any comments on the zone issue? And I, have we finished the discussion on the seasonality?
Pete?
I thought that was, we were, we were left off on winter camping. I thought that's right. Yeah. Um, I personally have no problem if any campgrounds existing want to go to winter campgrounds as long as there is, you know, you have your hands on it for plowing and, and everything else that we're supposed to do. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty big industry. I, I just don't wanna limit if the, the existing campgrounds for them to be able to do a winter if that's what they wanna do. Um, and I certainly don't wanna limit any, uh, newer campgrounds. This could be in 50 years from now. So I, I just don't wanna limit a business owner, uh, where residency would never come up because we're having it in our zone. You can't have residency at a campground.
I think the thing I would object to being in the winter, if people were gonna use a generator all the time. Because then it would disrupt the environment and, and people. So I, I don't know if we already have something similar already in place.
Yeah, you'd have to have a hookup, electrical, you'd have to do everything.
But I think we already discussed this under something else, that that couldn't happen all winter.
That would be the RV ordinance that was passed last year, yes.
Yeah.
So. All I'm gonna say on this one, I think it deserves a much more lengthy discussion on the seasonality and what we would require. I mean, I would prefer if we're gonna, if we're gonna go for year-round, I'd rather see a much more substantial setup than a campground um, for like water, sewer, electric, all of that. Um, and they would have more, it would have more requirements. So I would prefer to leave the seasonality in for what we're discussing now and maybe open up a discussion after we finish the comprehensive plan of, is, is winter camping something we wanna consider, um, allowing in campgrounds? And what, what would they need to do to get there? Because there are existing campgrounds too, so. I don't know if that's a smart kind of angle.
I would rather have it taken care of in this ordinance instead of going back later and dealing with it.
Then I'm gonna stick with seasonality. That would be my thought process.
And I'll stick with year-round.
And I would say seasonality then.
There's a lot more, there's a lot more work on this ordinance that needs to be done if you wanna make it year-round. We're not technically doing it.
Jamie?
Can I just make one comment on that?
Yeah.
So in our ordinance now, we have different categories. For instance, we have hotels and motels and stuff like that. So if you have a year-round campground, it then is basically becoming very similar to a hotel and motel, which are not allowed in the rural zones because then it truly is a commercial business year-round. So if we get into the year-round campground use, I think it does have to be a much more comprehensive discussion because kind of the difference between a campground and a hotel is one of them being, it's not a year-round thing. So I am the first to say that camping is evolving, but with that discussion, we have to think of all the repercussions of that evolution. Um, so I, I am a strong proponent of wait until the comprehensive plan is done because the comprehensive plan is gonna talk about uses in general in all of our zones. And at that point, it might say that the rural zones could allow a little bit more of a, uh, harsh business use, or it might say it needs less. Um, so really, I think that discussion should come after the comprehensive plan update.
Okay.
See what I'm saying, Pete? It's like.
Yeah, thank you for that. You're our expert. I appreciate that. I don't, we wanna nail this right. We don't wanna keep coming back and coming back, investing lots of money. They have campgrounds.
So, so to, seeing as we're going later and later, could we just have a thumbs up if we all think that it should just be seasonal?
For now.
Yeah. Okay.
They're allowed to revisit, right?
Of course, always.
Always. You can always revisit anything. Okay, so.
Can I make a recommendation following this, that the zoning subcommittee meet, um, next week? And, or e- even this week, depending on what the three of us have for time to kind of re- I, I know, I'm looking at your face, Steve. Actually, we have two weeks. We have two weeks we could look at this because we have extra time. Um, so find a time, relay that to people who are here this evening. I know there's some key people, we can definitely let the campground owners all know. And I know if we let just a few of the audience members know, they will relay the information to everybody else, I, I would assume. Um, and then we can invite them to the subcommittee. Um, I think we have enough direction. Um, I think we have enough direction, to be honest with you. I, I know it's not what everybody wants to hear. I think there are, you know, I know it's not what anybody, everybody wants to hear, but I think it's good compromise and I think we're being a lot more, yeah, I think we're being thoughtful about it, so. To try to mix, to mix to uses.
Okay.
So we will let you know when we're gonna meet and be prepared. Um, it is gonna be substantial. I don't wanna, my only comment is coming in and saying, no, 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 no. Don't do that. Come in, we're, you know, we're gonna discuss the issues just like we just did and try to make sure that we have something that can move forward in the following meeting.
All right. So we are at almost the end. So are there any council comments, if your brains are still working? Ann?
You know I have to comment.
Oh, I know what you're gonna talk about.
Next, next Saturday, October 19th, 7:00 PM at the Sanford Performing Arts Center. It is, you just do not wanna miss this event. It's the Sanford Backpack Program Lip Sync Showdown. I believe, uh, Chief Small will be on the stage, yes, uh, as will Counselor Hitchcock, Deputy Mayor Hurley, and myself. And we're super excited. It's gonna be an amazing, really fun event and it's gonna raise money to help feed Sanford students. So that is a win-win for everybody. So I hope I see you there.
Okay, just, who can top that? Any other council comments?
We promise to make complete fools of ourselves. Right, Nate?
Perfect.
Right. We can do it.
Jonathan is gonna be a part of that?
Probably not. My plate's pretty full.
This is how much we love Ann and we love the backpack program and the value of the backpack program to our community is why we are going to dance on stage with Ann, so.
There you go.
There you go.
And any future agenda items? And again, you can always text me or email me for me to add stuff on. Oh, Jonathan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just circling back to the, um, the syringe issue. Um, maybe we can get that back on the agenda for, for the next meeting and get an update at least.
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
Good.
Can you declare us out?
I declare us out.